Welcome to the Provo Municipal Council Meeting. We are, it's 5:43 on Tuesday, June 21st, 2016. We're meeting in the council chambers at 351 West Center in Provo, Utah. Welcome you today. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, Provo Channel 17, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. The council requests that citizens help maintain the decorum of meeting by turning off electronic devices, being respectful to the council and others, and refraining from applauding during the proceedings of the meeting. We'll have an opening prayer and Pledge of Allegiance by our former Ms. Provo, Melissa Richardson.
Father in heaven, we're grateful for your sake and this opportunity that we have to be gathered together to discuss the issues facing our city. We're grateful for the leaders of our city and for the citizens and the chance that we have to all work together and the fact that thy Spirit can be here to lead us and guide us at this time, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Neighborhood Spotlight will be presented by Rachel Whipple. She's the Vice Chair of the Mazur Neighborhood and has been serving in the absence of the, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I do, thank you. We'll begin with a roll call. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you'll start that.
John Curtis.
Gary Winington.
George Stewart.
Kim Santiago.
Dave Sewell.
Cave Van Buren.
Dave Connect.
Brian Jones.
Thank you. So we will now have Neighborhood Spotlight, Rachel Whipple, and she's the Mazur Neighborhood Vice Chair and Acting Chair, and she successfully defended her thesis yesterday, so congratulations.
Thank you. That's not part of the update, though.
Okay.
Yeah, so Mazur Neighborhood is a fantastic neighborhood. It's very, very lively and active. We've got huge parties planned for the Fourth of July week, and it is a week of celebration in our neighborhood. We're curious and excited about the new parade route that will go through our neighborhood a little bit more than it has in the past. Houses are selling well in our neighborhood. They don't stay on the market for very long, and often they're sold to people who know the sellers or who know other neighbors, and that's pretty good for building the community there. There's also excitement about the temple being open so close to us, and there's been a new stake formed, the Freedom Stake, that is right around the temple, and it includes the most western part of the Mazur Neighborhood. Ongoing is 300 South Construction, and there have been some complaints, but UDOT has been very responsive to those as they've been passed on. For the most part, our neighbors are resigned to, yes, this is happening, and some of them are even really excited that it's happening. Along with that, on 400 East, they are requesting more aggressive traffic calming measures be taken. The city had gone in and painted stripes and bike lanes to help slow the traffic on that Collector Street, and we would like a little bit more if that can be arranged. Our next neighborhood meeting will be this Thursday. Until now, we've been meeting on the Fourth Thursday of every month, normally at the fire station in a little room that's a storage room essentially, and the firefighters keep storing more and more things in there, and we're fitting less and less people. But we have been getting a dozen to 20 people coming regularly at our little meetings. This meeting on Thursday will be at the Mazur Park. We will be combining that with the police picnic so that we can talk to our officers and have a good time. We will also be having new neighborhood chair elections. To the best of our knowledge, Dallin has moved. It's a rumor that's unconfirmed because he's not super responsive, so we'll be electing a new chair and vice chairs. I've served as a vice chair since October of 2013, and so this is a little earlier than it normally would be scheduled, but my family is moving to Belgium for one year. But we will come back to Mazur Neighborhood. Concerns in our neighborhood. It's the usual stuff, parking violations, 311 responds pretty well through that, zoning with illegal apartments and businesses, and that's slower than resolving parking, but they're still pretty good, and drug houses, which is everybody's concern. But every once in a while, we get word that they've been able to collect enough information to take out one of those. The Mazur mural is still degrading. A video producer has approached us, expressing interest in taking that on as an artistic project, and we are hoping that that can move forward. Habitat for Humanity is helping us with a Brush with Kindness event. This is very much like the Paint Your Heart Out that we would do with Neighbor Works a few years ago, and so we spent last Saturday priming a house, and this next Saturday we'll be painting. If any of you want to join us and get paint, it's a lot of fun. Other new developments, Habitat for Humanity has gotten a property across from Allen's where they're planning to build two or three more little houses to go with the Brim Hall project that they'd done before. Right now, it's a staging area for the construction for UDOT, but we're excited about that. They've been doing good work in our neighborhood. And the new Temple View Apartments, which I think are in the downtown zone instead of Mazur but above us, are something that we're excited about, even though they seem to be a little bit tall to be right next to our neighborhood. Several properties have been fixed up, painted and, okay, painted and improved, although we have several abandoned or bank-owned properties in our neighborhood that we would like to get addressed. We bring these up with zoning, with the police, and we just have some, I think, not good community members in the banks that are holding these properties, but we would like to see those taken care of. In fact, in one of them, the trees have died in the yard because nobody's been watering it for a few years. But all in all, Mazur's pretty great, and we're very happy that we're able to live there and that we're part of Provo. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. We appreciate your time and dedication that you've shown to the Mazur Neighborhood. I know you'll be sorely missed this next year, but I hope you enjoy your time in Belgium, and it was also fun to get to ride along with you at the Bike Committee several weeks ago. Some council members and, actually, Mr. Harding and Mr. Jones and I were able to go along on that ride, and it was fun to see your neighborhood up close and personal, so thank The next item is, is going to be item number nine. We're moving that forward because Lieutenant Brandon Post has a scheduling conflict tonight, so we'll move ahead with that one. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve an application for a burn justice assistance grant and to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement with Utah County relating to the 2016 burn justice assistance grant program. And this will be presented by Lieutenant Brandon Post.
Chair, Council Administration, thank you for your time. Special thanks to the Chair for allowing me to present earlier, as I have an obligation right now to present our budget to the Chief's Advisory Board here in a few minutes. I would just quickly like to review the 2016 Justice Assistance Grant. As I'm sure you're all aware, the JAG is an annual grant awarded jurisdictions across the country, and this is on a formula based on Part I Violent Crime and Population. One of the requirements of this grant is that the mayor and city council approve both the department's allocation of funds and the interlocal agreement with Utah County. For 2015, Provo City was awarded $23,500. As a department, we've determined that the optimal distribution of these funds is to spend $18,300 on 15 conducted electrical weapons or tasers and then spend the remaining $5,700 on maintaining and updating computer equipment. Both of these allocations go toward covering some of our recurring costs as both tasers and electronics require periodic replacement. These allocations, it's important to note, these allocations are not supplanting current budget numbers, as current funding in these areas is not enough to cover our needs. Thank you. Any questions for me on that?
Other questions for Mr. Post?
Thank you.
See you then. Thank you. Any discussion on the grant? You look for a motion, then?
So, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Van Buren. All in favor? The vote is unanimous in the affirmative. We will now be pleased to have a presentation by the Covey Center. Paul Durden will be presenting.
Once again, we're grateful for the privilege to be able to share something that we do over at the Covey Center with all of you tonight. Tonight, we will be sharing a little bit of the play Fantastics, which will be performing in the Covey Center from the 14th of July through the 6th of August. I have the director of the play here with me tonight, Agnes Broberg. She's going to actually introduce the segment that they're going to perform for you, and when she finishes, I'll move the podium, and we'll let you hear what we're doing.
Thank you so very much for allowing us to come this evening. We're really grateful about it. Fantastics is a small production that opened off-Broadway in the 1960s and has run off-Broadway ever since. It is the longest-running off-Broadway show ever to be produced, and it's been produced all over the country to great success. We're really excited with it. The scene you're going to see here is a compilation of some of the most memorable music in the show, and we have our three main leads here to present it, El Gallo, Louisa, and Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was excellent. Beautiful. So if we want to get tickets, Mr. Jordan, online, the best way to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
CoveyCenter.org.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now have a presentation of Employee of the Month for the month of May 2016, and this will be presented by Greg Beckstrom.
Good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to recognize one of our Streets employees, Chad Rosier. For the recognition, he's been given by his fellow employees as Employee of the Month. Chad, if you could come on up here and join me. Before I say just a few words about Chad, I'd like to express appreciation of the Employees' Association. Jason and Cindy are here this evening from the Employees' Association, and as a manager in the city, we appreciate the work that the Employees' Association does. This employee recognition is something that's appreciated by the employees and is amongst the good work that the Employees' Association does. Chad Rosier was, joined the Streets section about three and a half, four years ago, and he's here this evening with his wife Kristin and his son, Riggins, and Chad has a characteristic that I can say about very few city employees that I'm aware of. I have known Chad since he was about Riggins' age. When I moved into the neighborhood where his parents and his siblings lived in Grandview many years ago and watched him grow up, along with my sons and many of the boys in the neighborhood, and have known him for all these years, although when he grew up, as young men do and leave the nest, I lost track of him for a decade or so, and I was surprised because I had no idea that he had applied, but was very pleased when I found out that our Streets manager, Rob Nesbit, has selected him to fill this vacancy in the Streets Department a few years ago. Since then, Chad has been a very quick learner in the Streets section. He is responsible for running the snowplow route in the southwest area of the city. He's also been adept at the design and construction of street signs that you see throughout the community, and he's also runs, as I understand it, the Yellow Stripe elements of the street painting machine. And that may seem like a fairly simple task, but as I think we all know in our jobs, we have occasion periodically to make mistakes, but there are few jobs where your mistakes are any more visible than when you're painting the yellow line down the middle of the road that tens of thousands of people are driving on during the course of the day, and he's taken on that responsibility with great skill, and we appreciate the work that he does and are happy to recognize him this evening for the recognition that he has received from his peers. I think that that's a result of the fact that not only is technical skills, but he's brought an attitude of enthusiasm and positivity and dedication that has been recognized by his peers in selecting him as the Employee of the Month. Congratulations, Chad. We look forward to many good years. I guess by the Kristin and Riggins and Jason and Cindy from the Employees' Association to join us. Thank you.
If we could come down for a quarter.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you, Jason.
Next, we'll have a presentation by Suzie Bramble. Is she here? No? Oh, you were... Oh, okay. I thought she might be... Perfect. Okay. We'll hear from Madison Monson, and we're grateful that Ms. Provo and her royalty... Is your other... Okay. Perfect. We'll just bring you up. Just come to the podium, and you can explain as you're coming up. I'd just like to express appreciation to Melissa Richardson. You were Ms. Provo two years ago and has done tremendous work with Fight the New Drug in our schools and has used her platform to bless our community, and I just want to say thank you. Oh, and Kelsey Taylor. Thank you, from last year. Sorry. And...
Katie Miller.
Katie Miller as well. I apologize. A little slow on the draw today, just getting back into it. So please, Madison, go ahead.
Thank you. I am so honored to stand before all of you tonight as the new Ms. Provo. I was crowned on May 28, and as recently said, my name is Madison Monson. And I just returned yesterday from the Miss Utah Pageant, where I competed with 50 girls, and was honored to be named as the third attendant to Miss Utah. I currently live on 9th East in Provo. I'm a classically trained ballerina. I'm a junior at BYU studying marketing, and I'm an entrepreneur with my own company that sells laser-cut metal signs and letters and numbers. I have deep Provo roots. My mom is a former Bulldog. My grandfather, as a father, is a former mayor of Provo, and my family owns two successful companies that currently employ over 1,000 people. My attendants were not able to attend tonight, but they are Madeline Wallstead, who you may remember from The Voice, that popular TV show, and Rachel Alamon. And they both have their individual platforms promoting self-esteem and defense against abuse. And we have our amazing directors, Robin Pollam, who is here, and Suzie Bramble, who wasn't able to attend. But these two women have donated countless hours of service to the Miss Provo organization and are such great examples of kindness and service and strength in our community. Those of you who are familiar with the Miss America organization know that this crown I'm wearing has four points that all have a symbolic meaning, and each point represents style, scholarship, success, and my personal favorite, service. I've created the service platform Read to Succeed and am an ambassador for literacy. I held a book drive and was able to collect 1,000 books to build a take-home reading library for a Title I elementary school. I held a summer reading contest in hopes of overcoming the summer slump that happens in elementary school students when they don't read over the summer, and in this contest, students read over 600 books in almost 1 million minutes. And I've worked with elementary schools to encourage reading on an individual, classroom, and school-wide level. To date, I have spent over 500 hours promoting my platform and serving the community. In continuing my platform, I have recently become a certified tutor with Provo's Project Read, where I am working to help the 28,000 illiterate adults in our community. I am signed up as a volunteer at the Provo Library to help with their summer reading program. I will be working with the Provo School District on their Provo Reads and their Battle of the Books programs. I'm also working with the United Way and spent the afternoon serving at their Utah County Read-Along event. My platform is very important to me, and so is promoting the city of Provo. Through my experience, I understand that every time I put this crown on, it is to represent and serve this amazing city, and I am here to make you look good. I have a lot to offer, and I hope that you will take advantage of my desire to serve and promote the city. My royalty and I would love to help and attend ribbon cuttings and different events at the senior citizen and rec centers, the city events, events at the elementary school and with the Chamber of Commerce. We are here to serve you. And I am privileged to call these former Miss Provos that we have with us some of my greatest friends and role models, and I hope to continue that, that their great legacy of service. I know that this crown, if used properly, can act as a microphone and allow me a voice as I promote literacy and serve the city of Provo. I've been given a $3,000 scholarship, which I thank you for, and I would like the opportunity to earn that scholarship by serving this community and make Provo a better place. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm excited to get to know each of you this year, and I'm ready to work hard. I hope you allow me to serve alongside of you. And I brought with me a copy of my resume and platform statement that I submitted for Miss Provo, as well as a business card that has my contact information on the back. So I will just pass these along. Just pass them around. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any council member questions for Madison? I just want to say thank you, and to, I'm sure, as you've talked to former Miss Provo winners, that the platform that you have and the position that you have will open doors for you, and there will be lots of ways for you to serve in the community that may not have been there and most likely wouldn't have been there without this position. And I appreciate so much the work that you're doing and the work that the former Miss Provo winners, I don't know how you call it, but the work that they've done as well in our community, and look forward to this partnership in having you attend and promote and to help us further all things that are great about Provo. And I think that you're a perfect person to do that, and you have a pretty good mom, too. I went to high school with her. Think highly of her as well. So thank you so much, and appreciate Ms. Pollam and also Ms. Bramble for the work that they've done to keep this going strong over the years. Hasn't been easy, I know, but appreciate the work that they've done as well.
Thank you.
And a comment by Mr. Stewart?
I'd like to add my congratulations in having worked for four years with Ms. Provos. I know how much work is ahead of you, so thank you for your service ahead of time. And thanks to the Miss Provo Pageant for what they do for Provo.
Thank you. I'm so excited to serve. I can't wait.
Mr. Sewell?
So I'm curious, how many former Miss Provos do we have here? I recognize the last three here, but are there more?
Just the three.
And who is she?
The four. Yeah, there's the four of us here.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't say that right. Including you, I recognize the most recent three. So who's the fourth? And what was your name?
Katie Purse was my name. I'm Katie Millard now, but yes, so I was 2012.
2012, okay. Okay. Great. Well, I just wanted to add my thanks to all of you. I was thinking, as I was looking at you before you came up, that there's probably hundreds of hours of service represented here, but you mentioned that you've already put in 500, and you've only been, what, a month now?
It's collectively over time, but I've been working hard in Provo.
So between the four of you, we've probably got over 1,000 hours of service, I'm guessing, here, and I just really, really want to thank you for your service and for your representation of the city, and for the two women who have worked so hard to nourish and strengthen this program in recent years. Thank you.
Thank you. The public comment segment of this meeting is an opportunity for any person in attendance to comment on matters that do not appear as a public hearing on the agenda. Items not scheduled for public hearing are item number five, number seven, and number nine. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence, should you not wish to speak, but instead to have your statement read aloud by the recorder, please provide her with a copy of that statement. The council and administration will not take any formal action on the matters that arise during public comment. Those with comments are invited to approach this podium.
Before I dash off to rehearsal, I just want to thank Provo for the Covey Center. I have directed throughout the valley numerous facilities, and the Covey Center is a jewel. I think it is an undiscovered gem, but it is so wonderful to be able to attend things like the Chinese acrobats and the Vienna Choir Boys and the dance concerts and the orchestra and things like that. It is such a beautiful facility. There is not anything within this valley that can compare to it, and it is such a joy as a director to be able to direct there and as a patron to be able to attend. I love the art galleries. I love walking through it. It is just a gorgeous, gorgeous, absolutely wonderful building, and I thank Provo for supporting it and having it because it is unique in the valley. There is nothing to compare, and I am so thrilled to be part of Provo here. I'm sorry, I was bad. Agnes Broberg, Orem. So thank you so much for having the Covey Center. It is just a delight. I cannot emphasize enough how thrilled I am to have that facility in our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I am Kelsey Taylor, and I'm a resident of Provo. And as most of you all know, I was the most recent Miss Provo, and I just gave up my crown. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of you and get to know you on that one-on-one basis, and for those of you that I haven't had the opportunity to work with, I would just like to take the time to express that Miss Provo is not just one night. You don't go in and put on your nice dress, show your talent, and do that. There's so much more to being a title holder, and I've had the amazing opportunity to serve on the Best Buddies Board for the state of Utah. My platform is working with people who have disabilities, and I've been able to create chapters in Provo here as well as across the state of Utah. And I think it's so great that we have the support from our city council because that is something that we need in order to move forward as an organization. We need to be able to have the experiences of getting to know our community. I had the opportunity to go in and read to an elementary school at the beginning of the year, spent time in a kindergarten class, and there was a student there. She was very, very rowdy and not the best student in the class, and I took some time and I spoke with her and sat down with her alone and got to know her, and she said, "You know, I want to be like you. I want to be you when I grow up." And in Provo, we need examples for our children that are good examples, that have great goals to achieve, and that's what I was to that little girl. I was able to talk to her. I was able to tell her that her dreams are achievable. She can be a future Miss Provo. And by the time that I went before the end of the school year was up, her ways had changed. She was number one in her class. She had gotten good grades in everything, and that's what we need. And I hope that you, as city council members, can understand the importance that come from the title holders in our community. There's so much that we have to offer, and I just appreciate your guys' support. Thank you.
My name's Melissa Richardson. I also served as a former Miss Provo 2014, and there are just two aspects I wanted to talk about specifically about the Miss Provo Pageant. The Miss America program is the umbrella that the Miss Provo Pageant falls under, and there are two aspects, I think, that are unique that define the pageant system that we have competed in, and those two things are scholarship and service. And so service, as you can see, you know, with Kelsey talking about her platform and Maddie talking about her platform, there is so much service that goes into the Miss Provo Pageant and the winners and the things that they do for the community and my own personal contribution, too. The community was through my platform, educating on the harms of pornography addiction, and so working with Fight the New Drug and with the city council, with the school board and PTA members, we were able to bring Fight the New Drug assemblies to every secondary school in Provo City, educating more than 5,000 students on the harms of pornography. And so that was an issue that was dear to my heart, and I was really grateful for the support that the city council gave in supporting that cause and then later on in the year, adopting the resolution commending citizens for speaking out on the harms of pornography, becoming educated, and encouraging them to become more educated on the harms of pornography. And so that's something that was very important to me and something that I spent my time doing as Miss Provo. And then the second thing that I wanted to talk about was scholarship, and the Miss Provo organization is unique in that it provides educational opportunities for women in helping them to achieve their goals. And for me, I just graduated from BYU, and I did so debt-free, and when I calculated the costs and looked at the awards and scholarships I'd received, I paid for half of my education on my own through the scholarships I'd earned from doing pageants. And so being able to do that was something that I felt very accomplished in, and just my last semester, from this last January to April, I spent in Washington, DC as a part of the Washington Seminar Program through BYU, and I did an internship at the National Center on Sexual Exploitation, and I was able to work on national campaigns educating on the harms of pornography. And so that's something I was able to do because of the Miss Provo Scholarship Program, because of the scholarship I had received, was able to fund that experience for me to do that and to become more educated so that I can continue to contribute in my community, whether that's in Provo or wherever I am able to live. And so I just wanted to highlight those different aspects of the Miss Provo Scholarship Program and the value that it brings to the community and to the citizens and to the girls who participate in the program. Thank you.
Hello. So I introduced myself as Katie Millard, but at the time that I was Miss Provo 2012, it was Katie Purse. A lot has changed since then. I have a little son that I'm living with. My husband and I, we live in San Francisco now. My husband's a dental student there, and it's so great to be back in Provo. This actually was very timely. We just happened to be visiting, and I'm so glad to be able to be here to advocate for the Miss Provo Scholarship Program because it was definitely something that changed my life. You can see these are women of substance, and just they're willing to work hard. They've done amazing things, and I'm grateful to be a part of that. And I have to start by saying, though, I'm with you on some of the... I was skeptical when I had a fellow BYU student first approach me about competing in the Miss Provo Scholarship Pageant, and I thought, oh, man, pageants, you know, a lot of the things, the negative stereotypes that people think. But, you know, sometimes it is really great to be wrong and to be proved wrong. It's a humbling thing and a great thing, I think, to happen to us several times throughout our life. And I, too, was able to work with the city on my platform, which was literacy and education. I was able to meet with the mayor early on and try to find an intersection of my passions and the needs of the city, was able to work with the United Way, ran book drives, also worked with Project Read, like Madison just told us about. Such an amazing opportunity, hundreds of hours of service and time dedicated to the city, and also just advocating and representing the city of Provo at countless events across the Wasatch Front. We really were there to be the cheerleader and representative and mascot for the city of Provo, and we were all passionate about Provo City, and I think it's really great to have a representative out there like that feels that strongly about our city. And one of the things I couldn't stop thinking about when I thought about what I wanted to come and say today is I feel like we live in an age where most of our youth, they have these role models that they see through filters and on screens, on TV, Instagram, but what happened to the value of a real tangible role model, someone that you can actually connect to and talk to, meet at these events and look up to? I mean, you've heard some of these examples, Kelsey's example of the girl that she met in the school. These are not one-time instances for Miss Provos as they serve throughout the community, throughout their year of service. It's an amazing thing, and it's a real thing, and I think that there's real value to be had in that. And we were talking before, you know, the group of us, and I think all of us feel like we're grateful for the opportunities that we had, but we were hungry for more. We're hungry to be used and to be utilized, and I'd encourage you to take advantage of the resource that is the title holder for the city of Provo. Like I said, these women are capable, they're smart, they're dedicated, and we'll be there. We'll be there for whatever meetings, whatever neighborhood, service projects that you have. That's what we're here for, and it was such a wonderful opportunity to be a part of, and I hope that that's something that can be carried on throughout Provo's future because the future is ripe for Provo, and these women want to be a part of it. And thank you for your time.
Hello there. My name is Juan Castañas, and I'm Miss Provo... No. I had the lucky privilege of, well, I... privilege of, well, I still have it, you know, for I don't know how much longer after that joke, of being the boyfriend of Miss Provo 2015. And I just wanted to say thank you, first of all. Thank you for all of your time. And I feel like I should get some kind of award for Miss Provo, because I went to all the events. And if you're familiar with Instagram husbands, I was the Instagram, you know, her PR specialist, all that stuff, just taking all these pictures. And I had the opportunity to really observe firsthand just all the good that not only Kelsey, but all the Miss Provos have done. As little girls would come up to her and inform her that, you know, oh, I want to be a dental hygienist. Kelsey would respond, why don't you want to be a dentist? When little girls would say, I would like to work at a law firm as an attorney. Kelsey would respond, why don't you want to own said law firm? And I think that's one of the miracles, and one of the many...I'd say one of the most important parts of the Miss Provo organization is the fact that these are role models for the entire community through all of the...through all of the parades, through the many appearances. They really do make an impact, and it's something that I had the opportunity to observe firsthand. And I hope that there will be many more opportunities for little girls to realize that they can reach their potential, and that the sky's the limit. Thank you.
Are there any further comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and thank all those who have spoken. First item of business tonight is a public hearing on an ordinance adopting a tentative budget for Provo City Corporation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017, in the amount of $201,794,044, setting a public hearing to consider a proposed change in the certified tax rate and amending the consolidated fee schedule. Not the tax rate part. So, scratch the public hearing, consider...well, we're still doing a public hearing. Just not doing the tax part. So, we're not...anyway.
Madam Chair.
Do we want to change the...introducing the item?
Yeah, if I might. We had originally intended to notice this item as simply a public hearing on the budget, and that's probably the safest way to go at this point. Due to council motion in last Thursday's work session, it was noticed as a public hearing on adopting a tentative budget and setting public hearings for truth and taxation. Because that was noticed, that certainly can still take place, if that's the council's desire at the end of the discussion tonight. But in a motion made during the work session earlier today, it was proposed that rather than vote on a tentative budget and truth and taxation hearings, that the council instead consider an ordinance that adopts a final budget, and does not include any truth and taxation hearings or tax rate increases. So, based on that motion, the ordinance that is...the ordinance draft that's currently in front of the council for consideration is that draft. But generally speaking, the following discussion is simply a public hearing on where to go next with the budget, and the council can, at the conclusion of that public hearing, can do any of those things that have been mentioned. They can adopt an ordinance establishing a final budget, or adopt an ordinance that establishes a tentative budget and sets truth and taxation hearings.
Thank you. And we will...this item will be presented by Dustin Grebaw. He's the Budget Officer and Controller for the city.
Thank you. Councilors, the budget we've, I think, altogether gone through quite extensively. And the budget that we're presenting tonight does not include a property tax increase. In order to accommodate that, we have reduced the transfer to the golf course by $77,190. So, the general fund portion is a balanced budget, including the adjustments that we discussed during the work session among the remainder of the city. So, the amount reflected is actually $201,143,500. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Other questions for Mr. Grebaw?
No questions. But they comment, this has been a major, every year, but it seems like this year, this has been something that I'm very grateful for the work that you have done as a budget committee, as an administration, to bring us a useful budget that will really affect our city with regards to our infrastructure, and with our...with the things that we hoped for our city. And I'm just...I thank you for doing...working so hard at that.
I should mention as well that the final budget document will be available online on our website tomorrow, incorporating the changes we've discussed today. So, currently it's not on the website, the entire budget document. It will be soon.
And did you get the corrections, just the typo type things?
Yes, I incorporated those into that budget document. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I'd like to add to Gary's comments, because thank you. This is new for you. You came in under heavy pressure, and you've done an incredible job, Dustin. So, thank you. John, thank you. We appreciate the work the Finance Department does.
With the council and with the rest of the administration staff.
We do a small part. The real work comes with you and John, so thank you.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Grebaw? Okay, just like to add my thanks to you and John, and your help with providing information, and the budget committee help with, you know, answering our multitude of questions. Appreciate you. The public might find this unusual, that we don't...that we're not firing questions away, but we've been firing questions away in work session, and we really have dug deep into this budget. And in work session, we had a...we also had a, what, six-hour retreat last Thursday, and was focused totally on the budget. And so, I think a lot of our questions have been answered, but we might want to maybe give an accounting of some of the changes that have been made over those...over the past several weeks, just accounting a few of the changes that we've made.
So, the majority of the changes have been either new issues or corrections that have been made to the tentative budget. The total amount has shifted, I think...I don't know, Ryan, if you have access to the document showing the changes. Yes, actually, excuse me for a moment. I have it on my laptop. I apologize. Rather than providing rough estimates, I would rather be precise. I'm an accountant now, so I feel like it's my responsibility. Yeah, that would be fine for the public's benefit. Actually, the other one would probably be better, a little more detail. In those changes included incorporating funding for a fleet facility from the general fund, and the corresponding transfer from...to the General CIP. There was a legislative action recently that changed the allocation of the road funds to cities. And this disadvantaged Provo, we had to decrease the estimate that we were receiving by about $330,000. And correspondingly, we had to decrease our road projects due to that legislative change. There were also increased revenue projections reflected on this left column that helped us when solving some of these issues, including some of the corrections to personnel in public works and other areas. The majority of the other corrections were related to shifting of personnel between funds, corrections to compensation totals, or previously unaccounted-for people that should have been included. If there are specific questions about...or highlights that the council has in mind that I'd like me to detail, I'd be happy to answer additional questions about those changes from the tentative budget that was proposed just over a month ago, I believe.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you sharing that. Mr. Harding?
Dustin? Previously, we had talked about adjusted budget for this year, and some of the difficulty in interpreting the results and comparing it to past years and the future proposed, as well as, I think, we talked about the full-time and part-time tallies. And my understanding was, we were told that, well, we'll work on it, we'll get it.
Yes. So, in the final budget document that will be available online early tomorrow is...so, what we have done is we've included projected revenues in the adjusted budget column. Now, largely, this has affected mostly to the positive. There's a few funds that we actually decreased that projected revenue. But largely, this will give you a better picture of the revenues that those funds will generate. The disadvantage to doing that, and particularly in those funds with lower revenues, is they have lower projected expenditures, but what we report is what the total budget authority they have is. So, what we'll show is, in that adjusted budget column, is what we expect their revenues to be, but the expenditure side shows if they were to spend 100% of their budget. And I know that that has an effect on what is reported as that unassigned fund balance at the bottom of each of those funds on their respective pages. And so, I think...does that answer your question about kind of...so, that correction, as far as the personnel goes, we...I have worked with the council staff on correcting those. So, that sheet towards the beginning that shows the full-time numbers does have some corrections on it, among other corrections throughout the document, to make sure that those align together and are consistent, and are reconciled to our HR system. That sheet in particular, though, still has, they're not errors, but there are discrepancies between our budgeting system and our personnel system. The methodology for budgeting part-time positions in particular is, from a budgeting perspective, I'm relatively agnostic towards the number of people that are employed part-time. I'm more concerned that those departments don't go over-budget with the amount that we've allocated to those part-time funds. So, while you might see a large discrepancy between the budgeted number, that is a large bucket, and doesn't have an actual number of headcount, whereas the actual number is a headcount, when, for instance, in the Parks and Recreation Department, there could be many people who work only a few hours a week, representing a smaller number. So, in each department's page, there is an FTE comparison across years. So, that is a much better snapshot of how these departments have changed over time. And I would caution anyone trying to draw too strong conclusions from that initial personnel comparison spreadsheet on how the city operates.
Would it be against best practices to add a column, so you have your adjusted, which includes, you know, the maximum that they could spend, you know, through...as authorized, and then have a separate column where, you know, we know that they're not going to spend all of the money that they had a bond out for, and that will carry over, and to have that in a separate column?
I think there is an opportunity to do that. What I would...my caution would be is complicating it even further. So, we added a column this year. So, normally, we report a five-year window, and we added a sixth column, so that we have two for the current fiscal year, of the original budget and the adjusted budget. To add another, I think, does provide some value, but I think it needs to be weighed against the complexity that it adds to the document. And if this document is intended for public or lay consumption, that might deter some readers, but it would obviously benefit those who are more interested in the substantive portions of the comparisons.
And maybe it makes more sense for subsequent years. I do know, as coming in as a fairly layperson, examining the budget for the first time, looking and seeing, you know, giant increases in what was budgeted, and then this adjusted, and the discrepancies, millions of dollars, is quite disconcerting. And so, if we're worried about, you know, a layperson getting through it, it may be helpful to have something that reflects more of what the end balance is projected to be.
Yeah. I think my current recommendation with the budget, I think it would...for future years, we might be able to incorporate that. My current recommendation is, the comparison is most valid between the original 2016 budget and the proposed or final adopted 2017 budget. And largely, that adjusted budget column does, and particularly in the capital improvement funds, have those millions of dollars difference. To me, that represents that if the city were to use the fund balance for the purposes intended, I think in all cases, we have additional fund balance on top of that. And to me, that is reassuring, that if we were to spend all of the money we had for every project in the city, we would have even more. And that's ultimately what we have those fund balances for, is to provide city services. So, while we might not ultimately expend all of that money this year, I think we should be confident that if they were, it would be for a good cause, and doing the things that the city needs done.
And then, just final...just a question, make sure I understand it correctly. Theoretically, if we were to pass a final budget tonight, we would not actually see the final budget until tomorrow. So, we'd be voting on something that we haven't seen the final details on.
So, actually, the exhibit available does include the final numbers. So, the council, and this is, I think, by way of clarification, the numbers represented in this document show largely, with the exception, I think, in the general fund and the capital improvement funds, the council adopting ultimately the bottom line for many of these areas. For instance, in the telecom, council's appropriating $3,218,969 in the telecom fund. Now, the budget document that will be available tomorrow includes additional detail beyond that, but that amount is what the council is appropriating. Now, the difference in the general fund is, there are departments within the general fund that is more specific that the council is appropriating. And largely, I can...those were the same to the tentative with the corrections that are made that are also available in the exhibit. And while those don't show by department, those are the changes that would be to the tentative budget document that is currently available. So, and the exception to the capital improvement funds is, the council does actually appropriate budgets for projects, and that is included, I think, in exhibit in the public documents of the amounts in each of those projects that are...that you will be adopting tonight.
Thank you.
We had a...at least I had emails. I think we all have had emails from some residents who...lots of their questions about the budget, in my mind, were about the transfers in and the transfers out. And I think you've addressed those already to the one constituent who had a list of questions. But I thought it might be helpful for the public to understand where money is transferring in, and where it's transferring out, and why those numbers, you know, can maybe be bigger on the transfer in and lower on the transfer out.
Yeah, so there...how...you'll notice in this schedule in particular, that there is a section for the enterprise funds, and a section for capital improvement funds. How we budget for capital improvement projects is we track for them in a separate fund. That fund is basically like a bank account for the capital projects of those entities. So, energy on the top of that enterprise fund, they have an operating budget of $61 million. They also have a capital budget of that $7,336,000. So, in order to fund the energy operations in the capital improvement fund, we transfer money from the operating fund to do that. And that capital fund then will expend those monies generated through the rates that the energy operating fund generates. There are a wide variety of reasons why we transfer funds between areas within the city. For instance, the initiation of the RAP tax, there is a transfer from the general fund to the Parks and Rec CIP, so that you'd see those transfers in there. That $1,306,000 represents the RAP tax money expected to be generated this next year. The reason why we recognize it in the general fund is because it is a tax revenue, and the general fund recognizes all of those tax revenues, including sales tax, property tax, and other taxes, and many other fees associated with it, so that we transfer it into that fund. But then, that is the location in which we expend those funds, so that we can track them more accurately. so that we can track them more accurately. So, while there's no transfer out there, it's because those are where the funds are held in their own area so that we know exactly how much is generated by the RAP tax. And we can track how much we're spending on those Parks and Recreation projects. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Other other questions? Mr. Stewart?
Dustin, I hope to bring this up in our work meeting, but we didn't have time, unfortunately. I'm still disappointed in the breakout for the special items in the mayor's budget. There's $93,000-plus in that budget. And it's not really accounted for in a way that the expenditures were made. Last year, in this current year's budget, 72% of that money that went to special items went to seven items, which could be individualized in a budget. So, I would appreciate maybe in the future budgets not having it, having a little more, for example, we have, last year's budget was $15,550 in public relations. This year's budget, before you gave me those other, that other information, was $16,000 in public relations. And according to the information that was given to me, another $45,000 is going to go to public relations. That's kind of general. So, it'd be nice to have it broken down a little bit more.
I think the challenge we run into is in our financial system, we have a finite resource of account numbers. And it's been our practice to largely utilize the current accounts that we have rather than create new ones, except where we're required to, particularly for grants or projects, we have to create new ones. So, largely, we try and find accounts that we already have that fit those needs. And so, for instance, those public relations costs, while we could itemize those and provide additional detail, largely, they are public-related expenses. And while it might not feel as transparent, we publish all of the information related to our purchases and expenditures. And if anyone is curious about how those monies are spent, we can provide financial information on exactly what it goes towards. And I think it's, I think, you would find similar instances of aggregation across the city. And it's a very common practice, not in a way that we intend to hide anything, but just because there are limits to how many, how far, how much detail we can provide. I mean, we could break many things down to much more detail, but you have the same issue of granularity and complexity versus...
Just such a large amount, $93,000.
So, I believe on Thursday, we provided a better breakdown.
Forty-five went to public relations.
Yeah. So, a lot of it went to public relations, which we felt was a more accurate representation instead of special items, which I agree can be ambiguous.
Because you already had a public relations budget of $16,000, so it just added another 45. So, why wasn't that put in the public relations budget?
The, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly which items you're referring to.
Public relations is 44,167. And already in the mayor's budget, there was $16,050 budgeted for public relations.
The mayor's general up function?
It was mayor's general, there was $3,500. And mayor's C, mayor's CAO was $2,000. And then, public relations office was $10,050.
Yes. So, in the current budget...
I just curious why they weren't, if it's really for, if it's for public relations, not really for, if it's for public relations, why wasn't aggregated in those particular accounts rather than giving separate, having special items and then breaking out public relations part of that?
So, I might be confused, but I think next year's budget does not include any special items, line items in the mayor's budget.
I would just appreciate also if public relations be broken down a little bit more. Again, you already had a line item for public relations in the three categories.
Yes. But they're in, I guess, so they're in three areas. So, there's $18,500 in mayor's office general as public relations. There's $14,000 in the mayor's CAO operations for public relations. And then, there's also $18,000 in deputy mayor for public relations. And so...
But in addition, you already had in those budgets, $3,500, $800, and $2,000.
Correct.
So, these are just additional public relations?
I think it's the same issue of, we could have created new accounts for each of those things. But we felt that, as a finance department, that those were public relations-related costs and that account code that we currently have that best reflects those expenditures.
Let me give you a couple of examples. Rooftop concerts, is that public relations?
I think, I think it could very easily be argued that that is a public relations, it's a public-facing activity that the city engages in and positively, I think, represents Provo City.
Director's retreat?
I...
I'm just saying, I would appreciate it being broken down a little bit more.
The director's retreat is not necessarily included in that budget for next year. That was an item in this year's budget as an expenditure, but it may not come from that area this next year as an account. And I think part of the challenge, too, is largely, these accounts, the expenditures related to them are left up to the discretion of the directors of those areas. And we, as a finance department, we're more concerned with the overall controls on those. And it's up to the discretion ultimately of the people making the purchases, as long as they fall within our purchasing guidelines. As far as a transparency goes, we would be happy to provide as much detail as the council or public is interested in.
Well, actually, you do give the detail in the CAFRA. We know where the money was spent. But when you're allocating it, it'd be nice to know where we're allocating it.
Right.
Thank you.
No problem.
I did have some questions about that, too, because the line items that you gave us were just public relations and professional services. So, what professional services? Who's providing those? What's included in that for this next, for this year's budget?
I think the expectation of detail, ultimately, we leave up to the discretion of the department directors. With items like this, a lot of it comes down to discretion, particularly in public relations. I personally don't know what those, what is in mind for those specific expenditures. And I think possibly, including the special items, there wasn't something specific in mind for the special items, which is why it was given a general account code to begin with in the fiscal year. And that discretion was used throughout the year to expend those areas, those items in those areas.
Well, and that, I guess that's my concern, is this $90,000 of special items that we don't know. I mean, I don't know, if I'm approving this budget and I don't know where $90,000 of it is going, I mean, in the whole scope of it, I would like to know. I would like to know where that's going. And I did ask, and I was given the expenditures for this year, which was $38,000. And, but I would just like to know where, why it's increased so much, why it didn't go from 38 to 90 this year. And if there's no accounting for where it's going, other than just public relations or to professional services, I would like to know what...
Was a $20,000 increase in Qualtrics. So, that was a professional service. Again, we didn't create account code for Qualtrics, but we increased the budget for the professional services to reflect that change.
So, that's the professional services?
Yeah.
Were there others in that, included in that?
So, ultimately, the council is appropriating $1,547,505 in the mayor's office. And that, the details and the minutia, I think, are kind of more of a day-to-day operation. And I think we would be happy to explain to you as those expenses come up. But largely, in the city, there, in many areas, there isn't that granularity of information available of down to how many pieces of paper are going to be purchased out of those office supplies. Largely, in finance, we don't know exactly what office supplies we're going to provide. But we do know generally, the amount of dollars we'll require for those office supplies.
And this is an office supply?
Able items, I think it reflects more, the nature of the mayor's office is much more fluid. They do a lot more diverse things. The mayor is involved in a lot of variety around the city. And I think he executes wise judgment in how he spends his funds. But I think I trust him enough to leave these allocations as they are. And I think if the council is interested in more granularity, we would be happy to comply. I felt that when we provided an additional breakdown on Thursday, that was an initial effort to increase that transparency. And I would be happy to increase the level of detail included in those. I think it would, now is probably not the best time to go through it. I would have to work with the mayor's department staff to provide. And likely, they do have specific things in mind that I'm unaware of.
And I've requested it. And I think Mr. Stewart's requested it. And that's why we're kind of where we're at now, you know? We've requested the more granularity, just so that I can feel confident, you know, answering to emails that I have received about it, that I can say, yeah, these are, these are the expenses there and that's, this is where it's going, you know? $38,000 of it was shown to us about what they've spent this year. But there's just that other, you know, amount that I have no idea where it's going until tonight. Part of it, now I understand that the professional services were part of that's going. And that would have, I guess that's all, I just want information. I just want to know where it's being allocated. I feel a lot more confident, you know, approving the budget when I know where the money is going, rather than just these vague special fund or PR or, you know, it's just, I feel like it's our fiduciary duty to understand where it's going to and...
The struggle is, as a finance department, we were under the impression that these account codes provide that level of detail, that those professional services would be expended on professional services. And it might be unnecessary to provide additional detail on every item of professional services around the city. If I were to show you professional services around the city, there would be millions and millions of dollars in that account code spread throughout the city. And I think it would, we would be happy to provide additional information related to it. But I think including that information in the budget document, I think, is maybe even beyond our ability to do on a regular basis. But on a, you know, if, on an individual basis, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. I just think the fact that it was more than double the amount over one year and then the fact that couldn't get information about it is just what raised the, even makes you more interested in understanding where, why, you know? So, anyway.
Other questions?
Mr. Winderton? Oh, you're thinking, okay. You lean forward. Don't make a move or call on you.
That's okay. I think that this one, I just, I know that there's, there are other needs that are being discussed here in the city and that are not part of this budget at this time. And I guess those things would have to come through special appropriations and go through the process of fund balance, probably, if those are to be funded.
In the mayor's letter that he includes in the beginning of the budget document, there is actually a list of, I think it's just over $3 million of requests for additional funding for many, I think, worthy causes related to public safety and services that the city provides. Largely, those will go unappropriated or unmet until next fiscal year, where if we have a budget surplus, we might be able to meet some of those demands. Some of them will be able to be funded out of this year's current budgets, based on budget savings throughout the year. But a lot of those won't be because of unexpected expenditures that also hit those departments, particularly in the police department.
What role does the general fund play in some of those things? Do we take things out of the general fund to do that? Or are we supposed to?
So, the supplemental requests included, there's a list in that mayor's letter.
Right, right.
And so, typically, the process includes our initial estimates on where the revenues are expected to be for the next fiscal year, and then our expected obligations associated with that. And ultimately, many of these requests come at the very end of the process, after all of the needs are met and the priorities are established. It's then that the discretion is used on which of those to fund. And they're ultimately based on need. Many of the ones that are approved are in the general fund. And many of the unmet needs are also in the general fund, but also in other areas of the city. Ultimately, if the general fund had additional funding, we would be able to do more of those things. But it's ultimately a balancing act of these needs within the city and the revenues that are available to the city, given our current streams.
Are there other questions or comments? Mr. Sewell?
So, I wanted to ask you about the new facility that the Utah State has provided to have a disaster recovery fund. We've scheduled this for a work session topic three different times over the last year, and we never seem to get around to talking about it. So, I guess, I guess we'll talk about it tonight. But are you aware of that, that new capability?
I am not, actually. John, I don't know if...
John, do you know about?
No, they're not moving or moving. Yeah.
So, well, let me, let me just explain briefly how it works. So, we have the, I always forget what you call this, the general fund reserve or, you know, the...
Yeah, fund balance.
Fund balance that can go up to...
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent of revenue. And then, and what's our current target for that?
I think our target is 25%. We're currently at about 20%.
About about 20%. And I think I heard the mayor say that he remembers when it was as low as 12%. So, I think it's been climbing over the years. So, this relatively new fund capability by state law, we can now set aside funds in a disaster recovery fund at the city level. And that fund can go up to 10% of revenue. And it doesn't affect the amount that we can save in the... I already forgot what you called it, the...
Fund balance.
Fund balance, okay.
Or general fund reserves.
General fund reserve, okay. So, I ran across this last year and have been watching it. And the last piece of the legislation was actually passed this year. So, there's two aspects to this. One is, it gives you the ability to set aside additional funds, but they're a little more restricted because they can only be used for certain purposes for declared emergencies and so forth. But there's another component in the state law now where they're, to try to encourage cities to put some money in there, is that the state has a sort of like an emergency loan program. And if there was a disaster, the cities who are putting money into this fund will get priority as far as being able to draw, to get a loan from the state fund. And there's also a sliding scale. If you have, I think it's like if you have more than 50% of this maximum amount, so I guess it'd be 5%, then you get a certain interest rate. It's like the minimum plus four or something. And the higher the percentage, the closer you are to the maximum, the lower the interest rate. So, if you have more than 90% of that, of that target, 10%, then you can, you can borrow money from the state fund at the lowest, at their very lowest rate. So, it's just kind of to encourage cities to put money into that fund. So, what I was going to suggest, since our fund balance does seem to be climbing and within a few years, I think we're going to be bumping up against that limit. If we could just transfer some portion, let's just say 2% maybe. So, it would put us on track if we're able to continue to do that within a few years of getting up to that maximum, so that we would qualify for the lowest interest rate. And if we have been climbing, it sounds like 1% or more per year, that'll slow us down, obviously, if we do that. But hopefully, we wouldn't drop too much in the reserve fund, but still make some progress in building up the...
Yeah. I think, I think if the council is interested in communicating with the administration, if there's an interest in pursuing this, we'd be happy to work with you on a plan to do that.
I do remember one of the concerns that we had with that, David, is we had to get that fund up so that we could, when we did bond, we had, knew that we had a couple of bonds coming forward. And the bonding agencies were quite concerned that we had higher than the 12%. That was way too low for them to get the good ratings. And so, we needed to raise that up so that we could get appropriate ratings from the bond agencies.
Did they give us a, like a target, the comfort level or?
Well, the states were, it wasn't, what was it, Wayne, mayor, at 18%? And I think now the state has raised that target up to 25% because it used to be right around...
Yeah, that's right. We sent you just recently a copy of the analysis that was done by Moody's Investor Services that reaffirmed our current bond rating. And one of their comments was, even though the state maximum is 25%, we see municipalities around... around the country trying to strive for higher numbers, and, and that our number was somewhere in the vicinity of twenty percent, and that was, that resulted in a, in a negative comment among the very few negative comments in our bond rating document, and so again, I think that was, that was part of the concern, was trying to max up the general fund balance, so that if there's a point in time at which we need to go bond again, that we've, we don't have a negative comment which could result in a higher interest rate for us later on. So, I think that was the only concern at that point. So, again, I think if, as Dustin suggested, if this is a desire of the council, then we ought to have a more robust fund balance decision and figure out how we take advantage of that opportunity.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back for discussion amongst council members. Could we put the resolution up on the screen, because it has changed? Okay, well-
Yeah, if I could run, I'll run through this really quickly from the one that you've seen before. So, this has the amount in it, in the short title, without the tax rate increase. The preamble is largely the same, but then if you scroll down in part one, you'll notice that it is actually an adoption of a final budget rather than a tentative budget. Then part two lists the tax rates, and those are the certified tax rates currently given to us by the county without any increases, and then the remainder of the document after that is the same as the tentative budget, except that the paragraphs scheduling a public hearing for truth and taxation have been removed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, okay, so yeah, in part one, exhibit A is the main budget, but we've specifically added and referenced an exhibit D, which is the CIP budget, so that's also included.
Okay, thank you. This item is scheduled for public hearings, so we'll open this up to the public. If you have, if you would like to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and city of residence.
Julie Roper, and I'm a Provo resident. I prepared my remarks based on information from what was the previous published budget, but as a twenty-eight-year resident of Provo City, I've seen quite a few things over the years. My, my utility bill, some, I've seen a lot of them in twenty-eight years. I don't feel that it's a utility bill anymore. I think it ceased to be a utility bill. Now, it's instead become how the city bills me for things that I didn't ask for, and many of them have nothing to do, the charges on here no longer have anything to do with the water or electricity that I consume, or how many trashcans I have at my residence. As you vote on your adopted budget, the result of which I will see on my utility bills for the rest of my life unless or until I move to another city. Your budget talks about shortfalls in expenses, needs, and forecasts, and I wonder if you have taken into account that we, as residential utility customers, have to worry about these in our own personal budgets as well. In addition to being a twenty-eight year resident, a homeowner, a parent of five children raised in Provo, and an active participant in the city, I work for Provo City in the customer service division. I talk to your customers over the phone. There's not a day that I answer the phone where I don't have to help some customer come to grips with their rising utility bills and help them find a way to pay them, or part of them. We do credit disconnects on a daily basis in excess of thirty a day, Monday through Thursday, where we disconnect customers for non-payment, because they have trouble paying their existing utility bills, before you add all of this to it. The consolidated fee schedule that we have published on our website shows the customer service fee, which we tell our customers is an infrastructure fee. This pays for the things that bring you electricity and water. That's where we're supposed to be building these things from. I don't know where that money is going, because it's not being saved and set aside for, for these things. The budget increases is not going to be a flat fee, but a percentage of the charges billed, and I guess it might be an advantage to me, because I have a swamp cooler rather than a, an air conditioner, because I can't afford one, so my bills might be slightly lower than my neighbors. You've already added the telecom debt charge and the transportation fees to our utility bills, and I'm against having any more charges added. It's been reported that this budget, by 2020, we can expect an average annual increase of almost a thousand dollars per household to appear on this utility bill, as the percentages you will bill us gradually increases. All of these incremental increases are putting us into some warm water now, but we will find ourselves boiled in just a few years' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, my name's Jerry Mom. I'm actually a neighbor of Sister Roper's, and a home teacher, too. My, my biggest concern, I sit here today and I go, why don't people come to these meetings? Well, I can tell you right now why they don't. We feel just as disconnected on a local level from you guys as I do from Washington DC, when I have to find out about a budget that is being proposed, or basically, it's already said and done, two weeks ago on KSL. That was the first time I'd ever heard of it, and it had to come from one of our delegates, Brian Watson, he calls me, and anyway, my, you know, I, I see you guys, it's just like Sister Roper said, by 2020, you'll be asking us for more money. I'm tired of all the little pet projects that go on. I don't know why we're doing them. It's not run like a business. I couldn't run a business like you guys do. I can't hold the public hostage, you know, for more money, no matter what I want, and I just, I, I even hear this accountant, he can't even tell you where, from thirty-eight to ninety thousand more, funds are going. Well, I, I know John Curtis, he told me, he stopped by my house, knocked on my door, and he's wanting to get elected, and, oh, I've got an open-door policy, but you know, he really, when you call him and talk to him, it's, you know what, you don't know everything that's going on. You, you know, you don't know all the behind the things, and I was left with this mess before, and anyway, I just go, we got a two-hundred-million-dollar budget. Between the water bill, the utility bills, you guys want to increase that budget more than half, and like she said, then it's going to all these different things, BRT, another hundred and ninety million, or whatever it is, and most residents you talk to have no idea that it was passed. I came and voted early this spring, and I thought we were voting on this RAP tax, and maybe somebody can tell me, was the BRT included in that?
Not in the RAP tax, no. We didn't vote on the BRT.
So, when did the BRT get passed?
The, what recently happened with the BRT was the agreements. There were agreements that were passed, an inter-local agreement that allowed us to have a say in how the project is, is put in, and the other agreement was to have some enhancements along the route that made it a little more livable for those people who lived right on the route. So, those were-
I've been to that university for years, and I think, what a great street, but you guys want to power a hundred and ninety million dollars more into it, and I talked to little old ladies in my work, and the different people, and they're going, why are we doing this stuff? Why do we need it? And I just feel like, man, guys, you guys got to stop. I mean, it's no different. It really is no different. I actually, I went to the Fed last night, I wasn't even thinking about this meeting, but that's all I dreamed about, is this meeting, and I just, I, I really don't even know where to start, but I do believe there needs to be something passed, where if the people don't show up, I mean, RAP tax, if I remember right, was voted on, a little over seven thousand, a little under seven thousand people showed up for that vote, and was passed by basically thirty-one hundred out of a hundred and fourteen thousand residents, and you, most people just, you talk to, and if you tell, like, I'll tell somebody if I know, and they go, well, they don't care what I have to say, and I, you know, I just, there's got to be a change. There's got to be a change, unless you guys just want to keep going down this road, because you're, you're, it's not, I mean, it isn't just Provo City. It's, it's every city, and it's just getting worse and worse, and I, I do know people that can't afford this increase, and what are they going to do? And, and then things like, again, we got, I just go, guys, you got to start, if you want to pass something, instead of making it your little project, maybe you ought to say, do it the other way around. Unless so many of the residents show up and vote, we aren't passing it, because then if they really want what you guys are proposing, they'll show up, but see, you've done it the other way around. You go, nobody shows up, we pass it, it's our little deal, and I'm supposed to thank Mayor Curtis, and David Seward, and all these guys for doing what for me. I don't, I just don't agree with it. We don't need, you know, they used to have a little ditch going down Provo City Park. We put millions of dollars into a splash pad, and I just go, you know, I got grandkids. I'd rather spend a thousand dollars extra a year on my grandkids, or give them to my kid go to school, or to help him out, than give it to you guys to spend on another project. And then the other thing that really upsets me is there's no, there's no money in this kitty. George, right here, it was quoted, George, on KSL, that there's no money in the kitty for this water, and all this water lines that got to be replaced, and all the stuff that has to be updated from some new EPA regulations, and I go, what, what in the world? But then, you know, again, you always hear from the mayor, well, I was that mayor, I didn't have any problem, but then they just keep doing the exact same thing over and over and over again, and then you guys want more increases for the employees of the city for insurance, six-point-three percent. Who's going to increase my pay by six-point-three percent for health insurance? And I guarantee it's going up a lot more than that this year, from what I see it's told me. So, I just go, somehow you guys need to stop spending our money, start thinking how to quit spending our money, and who cares about all these causes that go on? I, I, I really don't know what else to say, but come here and just go, this is the first meeting I've been to, because every time I hear about it, I've watched a few, and I just go, really? That is what goes on? And I sit here, and I go, you guys are talking about this budget, and he can't even move this thing and show the public what he's talking about. Yet, we're supposed to, it's a hearing, a public hearing, and I just go, it's truly just a dog and pony show. It's what it feels like for most people, because we're really disenfranchised from you all, and I can't show up to one of these meetings, you know, these work meetings from one to four. I've got a job, because I got to keep making money to pay for you guys' salaries, you guys' retirement, and I have to pay for my own retirement as a businessman. So, I just go, but I just feel like I've wasted my breath, wasted my time being here, when I should have been at another meeting trying to make some more money to provide for my family, you know what I'm saying? And I, I don't, I don't mean to come across as, I don't know it all either, but I do know something, the math, this doesn't make sense. You guys are spending way too much money, and I just ask you, whoever wants to vote, vote no on this budget. It needs to be redone. It needs to be re-looked at, and I, I mean, I buy in a service from Veracity, because of Provo City Council decided to go into business against the, against the private sector, and start Veracity and Broadweave, and now I pay for it for twenty years on my bill, you know, and then you got Provo Rec. What a waste of money. We got all these gyms trying to make a buck, and they can't provide, they can't go out and build a hundred-million-dollar facility, and then give a fee of five dollars per person to get in there. It's just absolutely, I just go, as a businessman, I just go, it's ridiculous. It really is. I don't even know how, I mean, probably most people in here are LDS, or if they're not, I don't know how you guys even live with yourself, thinking, oh, this is a great idea, and I think, yeah, it's a beautiful place, Provo. It's a beautiful people here, but we got to get our acting gear. We're just following the rest of the country down the, down the pipeline. So, anyway, I've got to go get to work, so, thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Can you, can I just clarify one comment that I made, just come to fly, trying to explain what the agreements were about. I didn't explain very well. The part where we were negotiating for enhancements was actually a lease on the road on 700 North. Some of our Provo roads was a lease for UTA to be able to put down their, the tracks, basically, for the, not the tracks, but the, the guideways and physical stations and those kinds of things on the road, and so that was partly what we negotiated for some of those enhancements, that were going to protect the residents, but the impetus for that agreement was the lease on our roads. I just wanted to clarify that, so I wasn't-
Kim, I, you know, as a resident, I go, that UTA is a joke. I got, I know an engineer that works for UTA, and he's like calling me up at the lab I'm at work, calling to your council, tell them not to pass this BRT deal, and I've just, they, it's all given money. They don't make any money. They're in the hole, and why do we want to give them money to mess up our town, and have us pay this non-stop tax? I mean, it's, I honestly, I just really don't know how you guys sit up there and do it. I couldn't.
I appreciate your, your comments and your concerns, and I, and I want you to know that, that this budget isn't as, it's not as fluffy as you think it is, and that's why there are, there are departments that are so lean. Most of the budget is very, very lean, and that's why I and Mr. Stewart will have that awkward conversation about the mayor's, that fund, because we want it to be lean, and if there's something that doesn't look lean, we're going to bring it up, even though it's very, it's probably awkward, and it's not a fun conversation to have, but we bring it up because we want our budget to be lean, and when it comes to utilities, it, it's painful. We pay the same utilities. We pay the same thing, and it's painful, but this has been years and years and years of not gradually increasing the rates, till we're to a point now where some of our infrastructure is between sixty-eight years old and ninety years old.
And I hear you.
And we have to replace this. If we can't provide water to our residents, if we can't provide energy to our residents, that's going to be no bueno either, right? So, there, we're trying to do the best we can, and make sure that we are providing the basic services, services, and we're trying to do this, we're not wanting to do these huge increases, and we've asked them to look at ways where we could spread those increases out and make it a little more manageable, but we're up against the clock now. We're kind of at the end of our useful life on some of these services, and we don't have enough storage. We don't have enough water storage. We have great resources, with the, the best water in arguably the nation. It's perfect water that comes from our springs and our wells, but we don't have enough storage, and so these are the things that we're grappling with, and that's why we have those conversations about what's not lean in the budget, because we know that what we're asking of residents, when we pass things like this, we're asking it of ourselves. We have to pay it, too.
Kim, why, why is it, though, that it's two weeks? Why is it two weeks you guys put it up there? You know, this is, I mean, honestly, I, every time I called somebody, they'd go, oh, we want to hear from the public. I heard one person showed up to the last meeting, and I really just go, you see, you guys are working on a broken system. You keep doing the same thing over and over, and you can see it, because why, in a business, I have to say, you know what, if I have all these tires go out on, I've got to replace after so many years, all these tires on a vehicle in my fleet, or I've got to replace this vehicle, I have to put money away in that kitty, but somehow the water, we've been paying all these bills, and nothing's got redone, and there's no money in this kitty? I go, it seems kind of criminal, actually. It really does. I mean, I'm not trying to say you, but over all these years, somebody has done something wrong, and I think it's because it's too easy money. It's too easy money to just go, yeah, nobody shows up, we're going to pass this budget, we got to have it. It's too easy money to take from us.
It's not easy. I can guarantee that. It's not easy, but I, I also appreciate where you're coming from.
Is there ever a cut, just like Utah? There was over, last year, there was over almost a billion dollars, I'm not going to, I'm going to round it up, but there was almost a billion dollars left over in that budget, and conservative, they all call themselves, because they're like Kurt Bramble, and you know, and the very fact is, they raised our gas tax, they raised our property tax, and they gave a, a deal to raise our, our, our property tax, whatever, and I just go, honestly, Pete, when do we ever get any money back? You know, when do we get anything back? When do we ever say, you know what, we don't need this service?
Could you do me a favor? Would you mind just emailing us or giving us your ideas about how to connect with residents better? We, we do it with notices in the paper, which I know aren't great. We do it through social media, which, which isn't always perfect, but if you, if you wouldn't mind emailing us-
I come tonight, and I go, I went on Sunday, and they told in the war, I couldn't find that on there. I had to go to Whibley. He actually says, if I- I had to go to Whibley. He actually says, if I, but I can't find, it should be right on that front page. It's 5:30, and the address, because you're going through this site trying to figure out where it's at. Really, guys, it really ought to be, if you wanna know what the residents want, there should be a vote that says, if you want this service, if you want a Provo Rec, then we expect, you know, 75% of the population to show up to vote, or 60%, whatever. At least over 50%, not 7,000 people.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind either leaving it with the recorder, or if you have suggestions. You don't have to.
I got there, I got there, Neil.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments?
Thank you for your time. I'm Matt Roper. I'm also, Julie's my wife, or I'm her husband, depending on who wants to take responsibility. I, gosh, folks, I mean, what you're, what you're saying, Kim, about the, about the utilities, obviously, there are needs that, that have to be met. You know, that's something that you have to look at every year, obviously, and prepare for. I guess some of the concern is, some of us wonder, aren't there some, some of the resources that we're spending on, on certain things that perhaps we could spend a little less on those things, so we, the utility increases didn't have to be so sharp? I think that that's, that's one of the concerns. And as we come here to the meeting tonight, it's hard to, based upon what we've read, and seeing these budget proposals and, and, and things. It's, it's great to have that, but it's, it's hard to see what decisions have been made. It's, it's hard to weigh the value of the arguments for allocating this, for example. And I guess that's where a lot of the frustration lies. It's not that people don't recognize that we need to meet those, those needs and many other needs of the city. I mean, I, I love this town. I mean, I've lived here for 28 years, and, and I love the people who live here. And I'm appreciated, appreciate the city leaders that we've had. It's just, it just, for a lot of us who are not accountants, it's hard, we want to participate in the process. We want to be supportive of the leaders that we elect. We want to be better informed. It's just, it's not entirely clear when we come to a meeting like this, how do we weigh, how, how, how can we see how you have weighed different decisions? I mean, we support the Covey Center, and, and I, I admit, I'm very, I don't know a lot about the details. I know that Mayor Curtis has done some tremendous things for the city, and I'm, I've always voted for him, okay? And I'm, I'm very appreciative of the things that have been happening in the city as we have grown. And I know that we've supported a lot of things, helped startup businesses, and we have different initiatives that help with these kinds of things. But I'm wondering if, as we look at these decisions, and as the city grows, and as some of these initiatives are more and more successful, is, is it worth looking at how maybe we could support them a little less as they have them take on a little more responsibility? Perhaps there are private individuals who could support things like some of the startup businesses. And I know that they've done good things, but they, some of these seem to be doing rather well. And perhaps that might offset some of the, some of the sharp increases that we're seeing in the utilities. And that way, we're still able to meet the needs that we have. I just, we feel somewhat disconnected from, from the decision processes, how you weigh the value of, of this and that against utility benefits. And I think that that's really the root, at the root of a lot of the frustration that, that you've heard with the last several people. So that's, that's the comment that I wanted to make, and again, thank you for, for your time.
Thank you. And in answer to, partly to answer your question, we do look at what we're subsidizing, and this budget, the Covey Center has been cut, was it $10,000 that we talked about today, $10,000? The golf course, we took out their, their fund to the tune of $77,000. And, and we also cut Downtown Provo Inc., who's, who is, you know, trying to help our downtown be more vibrant. We cut them $25,000 and plan to do more. Well, I shouldn't say that. We're, I can't speak for the whole council, but plan to have them sort of wean off needing us to subsidize them. And so there, I mean, that's, at least that's been the, the talk, you know, the conversation. But this year, we did, we did cut their budget from of $100,000 down $25,000. We are looking at subsidies. We are looking at ways to have people, you know, stand on their own two feet, but we don't really wanna cut them off at the knees either. We don't wanna make it so that they can't function. We're trying to wean off as slowly as we can afford to. And so in answer to your question, we are looking for efficiencies, and we're looking for a lean, lean budget. And as I mentioned before, that's why we ask the questions that we do. Mr. Connect?
I appreciate you taking the time, and, and you probably would have, have come to some of the afternoon things if, but you're working, right? Okay. Well, yeah, most people have a trouble coming in the afternoon. I, I did serve on the council 10 years ago under a different mayor, and, and of course, George, you, you know, having been a former mayor back in the 90s. Some of the decisions that I'm familiar with, going back quite a few years, where we didn't raise electric or, or utility rates in general, whether it be water or sewer, that was a political decision to keep the rates frozen for 20, over 20 years. And that was not a wise financial decision. And so John has inherited an infrastructure that unfortunately didn't have money set aside for replacement of our main water line, which, gee, if it's 90 years old, why have we not been saving money for 90 years to finally replace it? And, you know, you go back way beyond the recent mayors, and, and I don't know why they weren't more, more forward-thinking. But now we're, we're paying catch-up, and it's really painful to pay the price of replacing this infrastructure. And because of that, this year, I, we had a big discussion about, should we raise the property tax to keep up with inflation, because we need police and fire and all the things that the property tax helps pay for? And, and then we see that the school district is making an adjustment after not having raised certain aspects of their budget for their, like, six or seven years. And so they're gonna be adding $100 per, per year, per typical house onto your property tax. And so tonight, we will, we are considering not raising the property tax in Provo, because there's just too much going on. There's too many fees going up, and that's just one too many.
Are there other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll, we'll close the public comment. I do see one other resident who may have a comment, so I'll wait to close public comment, just in case. Mr. Roan, did you have anything you wanted to say during the public comment portion of the, of the meeting? We're talking about the budget, the adoption of the budget?
Thank you. Sorry I'm late.
That's okay.
I've been over with the Citizens Advisory Board meeting with the Police Department, so trying to continue to work with our city. Thank you for inviting me up. My name is Mike Roan. I live in the city of Provo, and I do have some general concerns about the budget. And I've reached out to all of you individually, asking a number of questions. And I guess if I were to, in just a couple of minutes, try and be really top-line in this, I, I have a couple of, maybe more than two fairly general concerns. One concern I have is that there's not as much transparency as I'd hoped. As you know, I'm involved in the neighborhood program in our city, and I have, I would like to know what the budget is for the neighborhood program. And I've noticed that the city council's portion of the budget during fiscal 2016 increased a little over eight and a half percent, which is two and a half times what the general budget changed between the initial budget and the revised budget. I'm concerned that it's increasing so much faster than the overall change in the city budget. And I would like to see a detailed idea of how the city council is spending its particular money, particularly as it relates to the neighborhood program, so that we who serve in that program have an idea of what's available in terms of resources for supporting our program. Additionally, I'm very concerned on page 12 of the budget, that there's a listing of, I don't know, it seems like it's nearly 500 part-time workers, who I assume are getting paid, that according to page 12 of the budget are unfunded. Now, I realize that Parks and Rec, which is the largest portion of those, need part-time seasonal workers. But I assume that they should be budgeted for, and so I'm very distressed over the fact that we have such a large number that I'm sure get paid, and I would hope that they're in the budget, because when we run a tight ship, it doesn't seem to me like there's enough allowance of free capital to be able to support four or 500 people we haven't expected to hire. And if we expect to hire and use them, I think they should be accounted for in the budget. I'm also concerned that, as I look at the, the, the reserve funds in the budget, that those items that take a large amount of capital, and particularly those where we've raised bonds for construction, that in the past four years, the amount of reserve funds has decreased in virtually everyone by as much as 80 to 97%. I think that creates a huge potential disaster for our city to cannibalize those funds in that manner. I am, my bias is, I think it makes more sense to accumulate funds as we use various infrastructure items throughout their lifetime, so that rather than have to bond for them and then pay interest, we have the substantial portion, if not all, of, of those funds when we need to replace the item. And so that we don't end up with water tanks that are 25 or 30 years past their, their expected life, or water pipes or sewer pipes in a similar situation. I'm also concerned that when the transfer out shows in the budget on any number of pages, from about page 79 through 92 or 3, the transfer out is far greater than the transfer in, and it's not apparent where the difference of that money goes. I would like that to be more readily available, and I would like to see, I, I don't understand why, when we have budget item, when we have bond items that appear of 10 or 12 million dollars in a particular department's financials, there's no subsequent payment of interest on those bonds. For example, if the bond money shows up in, in 2015, and we go all the way through 2016, there's no bond payment interest or principal payment, why that doesn't show up and why it's not in the budget for 2017? So trying to be brief and focus on bigger items of more consequence, those are the concerns that I have, that I would like to have the council kind of address and, and take into your deliberations. One final thing, I, I watched you from home this afternoon, and if I understood a resolution you passed, it seemed like you were going to combine the Budget Committee with the Audit Committee, and I, I think that's a huge problem, because the idea is the Audit Committee reviews those things, and I don't think you can have an entity, police itself. I think that creates problems. I would encourage you to potentially rethink that as, as you look at how you're serving our city. So thank you.
The audit is actually sponsored by the council, and so it is a, it's a council function, and it's not policing ourselves, but it's, well, I don't know how to explain that, Brian, a little bit better. But the reason why we went with the Budget Committee is because if we were to get another committee, we would have to get them up to speed on the budget and then the audit, and it seemed like it was gonna be a...
I listened to your discussion.
But maybe Brian can explain that.
The Audit Committee does have a responsibility that's different than the Budget Committee.
But the Audit Committee isn't doing the audit. There's an outside independent auditor hired by the city to do the auditor, to do the auditing. The function of the Audit Committee is to hear their report and to, and to consider whether they have done a good job with their outside independent auditing services.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Question?
One of the things that we'd probably address, FTE stands for full-time equivalence, not full-time employee. And so as you start getting those part-time workers, they are actually incorporated into the FTE, the full-time equivalence. So we are accounting for them in the budget, Mike. They are there.
When I looked at, if you put page 12 on the screen, I don't know if you can do that. If you scroll all the way down, there's an unfunded column, and at the bottom of that column, it shows 450 or 500 and some odd unfunded part-time people working in the city. That's what I'm referring to.
Earlier, we asked our, asked Dustin Graybaugh, I didn't see you there, glad you're still there, about that chart. And it's, we've determined that it's, it's a flawed chart, that it does not, is not probably the best way to present that information. And, because I, I came up with the same conclusions. There's, there's some problems here. There's some big discrepancies, and, and we've determined that it's, it's, that there's better ways to, to present it, and it's not, it's not, we, we don't have that many unfunded positions.
No, we have, we have budgeted part-time people, and, and I expect Parks and Recs will have several hundred for grounds and, and for activities and for the pool and all that stuff. I just was surprised that they weren't in the column that says budgeted part-time people.
As was I, and that, that's a problem that's been acknowledged.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. So Mike, you submitted quite a few questions.
I did. It shows I read the thing. Many of them were repetitious, because I saw the same pattern.
Right. And did you get an answer from staff on any of those?
As of when I left at 5:15 to go meet with the Police Department, no. I don't know if it's come since then or not, but as of when I left, no.
I understood that those have been sent to you, that you'd had a conversation with the administrative staff. If you haven't, I've got the written notes that I can forward you. I, I understood that they have been sent to you. But if that not the case, I'll send them right now.
If they did, the pigeon has yet to arrive.
All right, I'll send it right now.
Thank you.
I can address the, the increase in the budget. No, not at all, that's fine.
I have a stem cell injections into my knees.
Oh, wow. Yeah, no problem. Please, please have a seat. So you asked about the neighborhood program funds, and over the last several years, that fund has been reduced until, two years ago, there was nothing, and that was an oversight, actually, that our executive director stated. And then last year was down to 387. And so the, the 5,000, in fiscal year 1415, it was 2,500. But there was concern that the neighborhood program was, was, needed to be infused with more life and to get it back to the status where it was before, because it, it just, the, the funds had dwindled and had been reduced. And I think for, you know, trying to be fiscally prudent, but to the point where, you know, we realize that the neighborhood program is our lifeline when it comes to getting information down the rows, and I think that this council has made that a priority. Communications is a priority, and in order to run that program the way we felt like we needed to, to maintain that lifeline, to keep people engaged, and to run it to the level that we felt like was necessary, that's why the increase. And, and it seems like a bigger increase because there was nothing two years ago, and then there was a few hundred dollars the next year, so.
I'm unaware of what is in the current, the proposed budget for the neighborhood program. I have asked for that information, but I haven't seen that answer either.
Okay. This was included in the, in the budget. Oh, is this included in the extra sheets? That's why? Because this is included in the extra sheets that we were given as council members, but that hasn't been placed on the website? Okay, so I apologize. So we will get that to you. We got your email yesterday, and, and I know most of us were just, you know, running and haven't responded to lots of emails yet, so. But anyway, we can get that to you. Were there other questions that you wanted answered? We have Dustin here, and he's the man, so if you, if you would like him to address some of those questions, we'd be happy to have him. Other, other, you know, residents may have some of the same.
Well, I mean, in, in some cases, there's a transfer out in a department of 4.32 million, and only 2.2 million is transferred into the capital improvement part of the same department. And in, in other cases, there's a transfer out of like 10 million and only a transfer in of 4 million. I mean, there's, there's huge discrepancies about, and, and there's no footnote that I saw about the money's divided, and part of it goes here and part of it goes there, and so.
Maybe we can be better about including those footnotes. But a lot of the utility funds, they transfer 11% of the revenue in general. And in those detail sheets, actually, is all the information. Sorry. In the, in the detail sheets that Councilor Santiago is referring to, there is all the, all the detail of where there's, those funds are going to, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that when you show a transfer out of 4.2 million, and you only show a transfer in of 2.2 million, you know, and people can't tell where it goes, you know, in terms of sunshine laws and full disclosure, that raises a question, and it's fairly replete throughout the entire process.
I don't know if the council will answer, but I think largely if you have further questions beyond the ones that you requested, that I think are being sent to you right now, we'd be happy to, to explain anything to you.
What about the bond payments? Payments of principal and interest on our bonds?
Those are included in the budget. Usually they're included in, in the administration function of those budgets. We made the change, actually, from last year to this year to include the budgets by area of function instead of by type of expense. So previously, we would have had a non-operating area, so if you look in last year's budget, that non-operating area would include the debt payments. Now, by reporting by function, that's usually included within one of those functions, the bond payments is.
So if I'm the Energy Department, for example, and I have a $10.2 million bond outstanding, and the interest rate's 5%, and it's retired over 20 years, there's some kind of payment, and you've got the bond listed as capital to be utilized, and you've got it being transferred to the CIP part, then you've got it being spent. But then, I don't know why you don't have the bond payment for the obligation that you show the asset in the same place.
Yeah. And it's just the way we account for the cost is in the Energy Administration function has the payment, and actually in the detail sheet, which we could provide to you, has the, the principal and interest as separate line items.
Anyway, those are the general type questions I have now, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you being here, too.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to council for discussion. And if there is no discussion, a, a motion?
I'm not ready to move, but I do have some discussion, whether before or after the, the motion. It's all right. I'll just start. Wish I knew a better way to organize this, but I'll start here. Five days ago, the council, after spending several hours discussing the budget and policy and fiscal responsibility, decided that we would clarify and reaffirm, I believe it's a budget intent, of increasing our property tax rate to keep up with inflation. And now, five days later, we appear set to vote on an ordinance that would not follow that budget intent. So I'm, I'm a bit confused at what happened in the intervening five days, why the majority of the council, the council's opinion changed fairly drastically in, in that regard. You know, I, I understand the, the pain of paying taxes. I understand it's always difficult to, to ask our residents to pay for the services they receive. So many thoughts here. For 20-plus, 25 years or so, we have, our city leaders chose not to raise utility rates and not to raise the property tax rate. And, well, the property tax, it can't, we can't even call it a rate, because our tax rate, assuming that there is appreciation of value, which occurs just through inflation, the tax rate actually decreases. And so in those, what did we figure, out of the last 16 years, our buying power from, from our property taxes has decreased 30%. And so what that means is, we have been receiving services as residents, we've been receiving services that we were not fully funding, we were not fully paying for. And that has put us in the predicament where it, it's pretty easy to say, there's a, there's a water storage tank there that's 25 years overdue to be replaced, or that's, there's a water line, or all of these, all of these infrastructures that are pretty easy to point to and say, that needs to be replaced. We, we've got a water treatment plant that's, that's crumbling. Maybe a little less apparent is the other services that, that the city provides. We've talked about our dispatch that is, is significantly understaffed when you look at, at the staffing levels for the call volume and, and what they're asked to do. We, we've talked about how our, our police force is smaller, even though it's providing services to more people, fielding more calls, responding to more auto accidents. We have our fire department with less staff, and we, it was news to me, finding out in our, our budget retreat, that we have sections of our city that does not have fire protection during certain hours of the day, because they're stretched so thin. We have things like, I mean, you could go, I think, through just about any of the services that, that the city provides. We've had lots of residents complaining about a lack of zoning enforcement or parking enforcement. We just heard about how our neighborhood program was, was cut and cut until the point that it was losing effectiveness. All of these things have, have, have happened as we did not raise our property tax just to keep up with inflation. And I think it's, it's great that we've been able to achieve a very lean budget, but at what cost? We're, we're providing services to our residents, but, but we're not paying for them, and it's, it's, we're, it's, we're, I mean, for example, our dispatch, if I remember the numbers right, we have 24 dispatch operators. Yet, over the last five years, we've lost 37 employees and trainees because of the stressful nature, because they're overworked, because, because they're, because it's, it's such a lean department that, that, that we're asking too much, and, and we're losing people. And so the tenure, the, the, the tenure that of our, of our operators suffers, we're told that they, they're not able to go out for training because there's no one to fill in their shifts. And that affects the services that we receive. When you call 911, you expect a professional to help you in a potentially life-threatening situation. And yet, we are not properly funding that, and I think we can go down through all of these things. And so, so over the last 20 years, we have, we have not kept up with inflation. And, and yes, there, there are other ways that our general fund is, is funded, and some of those do keep up with inflation, but property taxes is a portion, and that has not increased. Yet, we have more people here, and the services are being stretched thinner, and our buying power has reduced. So the, the burden on our, our residents has decreased, if you look at the current value of money. And, and so now, we're talking about, okay, we're not going to go, we're, we're making up some in our, in our utility rates for, for past neglect. We're not even talking about doing that for our, our property tax, but five days ago, we said it was our intent to increase, to start, at least now, increasing with inflation. We're, we're in a giant hole, but at least we're going to stop digging. And, and yet now, five days later, we're now considering not raising that, that fee. And I don't know if I should just say everything now or respond, but let me just, let me just say that at the end of our, our work session, we were presented with a revenue-neutral proposal, a way to increase our property tax just to the rate of inflation and cut elsewhere so that there's a net neutral impact on our residents. And, and yet, it seems that that didn't gain traction. It seems that the prudent thing to do is, is, is to at least try to keep up with inflation going forward and, and not continue to dig ourselves deeper. Today, we have, we potentially could pass a final budget, and then the door's closed for the next 12 months, and, and we cannot, we cannot keep up with inflation in our property taxes. Or we could pass a tentative budget, which would then give us the opportunity to have truth and taxation meetings, we could hear more from the public, we could discuss ideas like the revenue-neutral proposal. And we could keep this discussion, we could have this discussion and may, and make a more informed decision on whether it makes sense to increase our, our property tax rates or not. And remember, we're, we're talking about $1.80, $1.80 annually for the average household in Provo. I'm going to feel the pain as well when, when the school district increases their tax rates. But we're talking, you know, 98% less, we're, we're talking $1.80 for the average family in order to exercise some fiscal responsibility and, and keep our property taxes in line with inflation. So I would implore the council members to, at the very least, don't close the door on this. Let's, let's continue this discussion, let's see if there's other creative ways we can approach this. So we don't even have to increase the total tax burden on our, well, not, and it's not even increasing, it's keeping it up with inflation for, for our residents. We, we, we don't, we, we can have the discussion on, on ways to keep our, our city services sustainable if we do not pass a final budget tonight, but instead pass a tentative budget and then continue the conversation.
Mr. Winderton?
Thank you. When I began becoming involved in city council issues, I remember sitting down with John Borget, and he said, are you sure you want to get involved in this? Because we are going to be facing, over the next five or six years, increases that will be very difficult, as is, for you as a member of the city council. And he says, that's because we have not done this for so many years. These will be things that need to be taken care of, because our expenses have risen way beyond our income abilities. And we have made some hard decisions. We have increased utility rates, we have increased fees, but we have also done more ser, given more service to the community than we have in the past. When I think of what we've done at the rec center, I heard tonight complaints about the rec center, we are not going to be able to please everybody in our community. Everybody has different values. What is the role of government? But when I think of what we've done for the rec, at the rec center, and the way it has been received by the community, what a wonderful thing. And then I have heard from the splash pad people, who is, this has been criticized tonight, I can't go to the rec center. And so this gives me an opportunity for me, for me to take my children to a place where they can cool down in the summertime. And so as we look at these different projects and things, yes, they do cost money. I challenge anyone to find a can of tomato soup that cost the same 25 years ago as it does today. And when we come to the residents for this proposal, we have done a lot in helping close the gap between the revenues and the expenses. And as we came this year, I was hopeful that we could get 15 more cents a month from the residents for the cost of things going up in our community. We have so many different things that we're grateful for, that we want to have in our community, and if those people are concerned about those things, I very much appreciate, why are we funding this? That's the question I want to hear. Why are we funding this? And then let's have the discussion on, is it important for our community? But for the most part, the things that we've decided that we want to fund, they're going to continue to go up, just like everything else. And I know my heart aches for the people that also, that's the question they're going to have to talk with their bosses about, and their employers, and, and their businesses, how am I going to get that 15 cents a month more, or that 30 cents a month more to cover the cities and the cost for my family? It's a hard, hard thing to do, but I think it's something, it's a reality that we have to face. And at 15 cents a month, I think it was also an opportunity for us as a council to go forward to the community and say, this is what we're doing with your money. As we do this, we are now doing that today, to have a truth and taxation period, I think we're, it's also another opportunity where we could say, look at where we're spending your money, and if you don't like what we're doing, please let us know, so that, and tell us where to cut. Tell us you don't like certain programs, certain projects that we're doing, and be specific, so that we actually know what the representative, what the, what the citizens want. And then we can act on those things. But often, we get into the position where, I don't like this, I don't like paying taxes, none of us do. But tell us, okay, if you don't want to pay taxes, where should we take the money from? And that would be very helpful. I appreciate those things happening, to letting us know those things. I, too, am a little disappointed that five days ago, we voted to, as a council, to look at the increase of 15 cents a month, and now we're backing off from that. I wonder why that intense statement is there, and I think if we're not going to have the courage to do what we think is right and not kick the can down the road, I still think we're kicking the can down the road. We have done a lot, but I think even this little here, this little thing here sends a message that we are, in some degree, kicking it down the road.
Mr. Connect?
George, do you have the figures on how much in the last year has been going into the general fund because of the increase, or maybe what will in the next year, but due to the increase in the rate, utility rates?
11% transfer will generate $671,838 from the utilities, various utilities. And we also assess a 6% franchise fee. That will generate $366,458, so a total of over a million dollars will go into the general fund from the fee. from the fee increases in the utility rates to help fund the various activities the city has. So the utility rates themselves will go up $6 million, but it'll generate over a million dollars for the general fund.
Thank you, George. So based on what revenue is going to come into the city, just as a consequence of us raising the utility rates, that is a factor in my decision. And also the, the fact that the school district surprised us with a hundred dollar a year increase on the property tax. As a matter of, I, I, I mean, I, in good conscience, I couldn't see raising our property tax. And I know it's not a lot of money, but it's, it still sends a message that we, we were able to balance the budget. Uh, we did consider raising it. We raised it last year. We may raise it next year, but I don't think it's prudent to re-raising it this year. And the decision largely was affected in my mind by the, the hundred dollar rise in the, um, property tax that was imposed by the school district. And I'm, I'm sure they have good reason. But, uh, I don't want to be adding, raising our property tax at the same time that they're trying to play catch up.
Mr. Sewell?
So I, um, I echo the comments that Mr. Harding and Mr. Winderton made. I, we, we had the vote five days ago about the intent to raise property tax, to do an inflation adjustment every year. There was, Mr. Winderton wasn't there and the vote was four to two, but he told me later that he would have supported that. So, um, Thursday, we had five votes that that was a good long-term structural policy. And, and yet five days later, we're not following that policy. And the thing that's hardest for me about that is it seems like most of the reasons given for not following it had to do with the burden on residents because of the utility fee increases. But we, we had an option that would have been revenue neutral by reducing that at the same time that we raised the property tax that would have negated that additional burden. So I, I was disappointed that more, um, consideration wasn't given to that. I hope, I hope that that would still be on the table and that we would have, um, have the truth in taxation's, um, whatever you call it, meeting, hearing to discuss this further. Cause I, I think if we pass this option by tonight, that it's probably not going to come back again for a while. As far as the school board, there's, there's a difference of opinion on that. I, I think good policy shouldn't be affected by what another entity happens to do. As I mentioned earlier, I, I had a good talk with Julie Rash today about the property tax. And I was telling her what we were, you know, about the intent statement that we'd recently passed. And she thought that was actually pretty cool. Uh, well, she didn't put it like that, but a good idea to be, you know, a small inflation adjustment each year so that we wouldn't be in the position the school board's in right now of trying to do an inflation adjustment going back to 2009. Um, I actually tried to call Michelle Cuffusi today to, to ask her opinion on that. She's here today from the school board, but, uh, wasn't able to reach her. So anyway, um, I just hope that, um, we would consider it for, if, if we don't have the political will, five days after a, a five to two vote saying this is a good idea, then I kind of agree with Mr. Winderton. I, I don't know really what value there is in having the intent statement and maybe we should repeal it. So.
Mr. Stewart?
Information comes and helps make decisions. And I think more information has come forth. One thing that was brought up was that property taxes as a percentage of the budget, total revenue excluding the revenue from transfers was going down. Again, in 2013, I'm reading from the information given to me by the finance department, property taxes were $4,314,024 against 42 million in total revenue, which was 10.23%. This year in the budget, the proposed budget, property taxes are 5129. Well, actually it'd be a little less because we didn't raise property taxes, but they're about 5 million, 500, excuse me, 5 million, $50,000, which is about 10%. So they really haven't decreased. And that's because of growth. So our property taxes have kept up as a percentage of the total revenue for the city excluding transfers because of the growth in the city. So I feel confident that property taxes as a percentage of our total revenue are keeping up and we don't need to increase them. We don't need to increase the burden on our residents this year when we're increasing fees like we are. Like I said, fees are increasing over $6 million to fund infrastructure. I don't think we need a property tax increase on top of that. Thank you.
Mr. Van Buren?
Short comment. We have heard about how this inflationary thing, we just have to keep raising things to keep up with it. As I did some very simple calculations, um, our budget from 2012 to 2017 has increased 46 mil, 46 million dollars, which represents about a 29.9 increase. Which if you average it out those five years, that means this is a 6% increase annually for the last five years. And if you look at the budget, if you look at, um, inflation, I don't know that it's been 6% any of those years. I'd have to go back and do that research, but I don't think it's, I think it's been closer to one and a half to two and a half, maybe 3%. Um, so, and then what has changed five days ago, what changed is a motion was made and it was voted on. That was, that was a change. The, the process was followed and, and that was voted to get us where we are here tonight. So I will, I will support the, the ordinance that we have before us now and to not have the truth in taxation hearings and increase the property tax.
Are there other comments? Mr. Harding?
I don't know what those calculations were that, that, uh, Mr. Van Buren just talked about. I don't know which, which numbers you pulled from. Um, I don't know if that has to do with, with bonding that we've recently done and the expenditures that we're going to be making. Some of these capital investments are, are pretty large or if, if that's, doesn't include those, um, but just includes, uh, the increase in budget due to utility rate increases. Um, but if, if it's the latter, um, I imagine that's because our utility rates did not increase for 25 years and our property taxes did not increase for 25 years. And so, um, now we're playing catch up. And yeah, it is very painful. No question. It is very painful. Um, but by adopting prudent practices now and implementing a 15 cent per month increase, now we're going to hopefully at least put future councils on the right track so that they don't need to be increasing, uh, increasing budgets. What, 26% you say? Is that over, over five years? So, uh, as Mr. Sewell pointed out, I mean, this is good policy. And I think if we have the will to do good policy now, we will avoid the painful situations that we're dealing with now. And I think it's, it's, I feel that I was elected to make hard choices and to do what's, do what's fiscally responsible and sustainable now so that we have a brighter future for the community.
I'd just like to say, it was mentioned earlier, Mr. Harding, you mentioned that, um, this property tax has been tied to the 911 operators. And I would argue that that's an important thing that needs to be funded. And I think that that happens by efficiencies in the budget. I think those are necessary, but I don't think it has to necessarily come from a property tax increase. Cause a property tax increase would go into the general fund and then that money for the 911 operators would come. And I think there are ways that we could be more efficient. We could take it from the public relations and pay for 911 operators. I mean, there, there are ways to do that. It doesn't have to be tied to the property tax increase.
If I could respond to that, um, I agree. We can always, uh, I don't see her here tonight, but Pam Jones, um, often speaks to us on, on these things and I appreciate her opinion. And she talked about a penny plan, which is you just take the budget and you cut one penny out of every dollar that is proposed and you make it make do. And, and I think that's what we've done. We've, we've, we've looked for efficiencies. Um, and we've done that for 25 years. 25 years, we have not increased these fees. And, but what that looks like, it's, it's easy to, to pull one penny out, but over time that really adds up. And we are underfunding systematically, we are underfunding our services. And what does that look like? Well, that looks like what we have in dispatch. So yeah, we can fix that. We can fix that by finding things elsewhere. Um, but, but it's, it's, it's pulling from other essential services in order to, to, to fund that, you know? And then how are we going to fund our, our police, our fire, our zoning enforcement? These other things. Um, and, you know, we talk about subsidies and we, we talk about, you know, we call it all public relations. Well, public relations also is, you know, when people say, well, hey, how come I didn't hear about this until, you know, two weeks ago? Well, we've been doing a lot to try to get the word out. We have websites. We have all of these things. And what does that come out of? Public relations. And, and so we have, we have, you know, we talk about, well, you know, we'll just, we'll, we'll cut the rooftop concerts budget. Well, okay, that's fine, but what is the return? We, we call them subsidies, but you can also look at them as investments. What is the good? I mean, even if you, you take out quality of life, just look at the financial return on the investment when the city puts in $16,000 in a year, you know, a couple thousand dollars a, a month for, for these events that bring thousands, tens of thousands downtown. It gives people the, this experience, this great experience in our downtown and that helps us with the economic and, and it drives up our sales, um, taxes and increases our property taxes. If we, if we start stripping out these things, then not only does our quality of life go down, but our tax base also goes down. And so I'm sure we can, I'm, I'm sure we can fund these things through not having a, a, a property tax increase yet again. But time, if, over time, we will just get into a worse situation. I think we're already in a very bad situation where we are with underfunding our services. I'm fine, I, I'm fine with having, cutting taxes, but we have to cut services as well. And if we, if we are demanding services, if we're demanding, we want fresh water coming out of our taps, but we're not willing to pay for it. To me, that's irresponsible.
And I guess I would just say that we are paying for that. We're paying for the water out of our taps. And that's the big, the big, you know, issue right now is trying to pay for that. And, um, although I agree with the, the inflationary rise in principle, I also said in work session yesterday that I would have to look at the, the total package of what we're facing at that time. I can't just vote right, say right now that I'm going to vote for an inflationary increase for, and through property tax every single year. I, I said that in the work session. I feel that way today, that I have to look at the total package of, of what we are, what we're putting, that the total burden, tax burden that we're putting on our residents, whether that's from the school district, whether that's from the city, wherever that's from, the Central Utah Water District, all the taxing entities that take a piece of that pie. School district is 67% of our property tax, of the property tax goes to the school district. But that's still the increase, the total tax burden on the resident. And so we have to, we can't just turn a blind eye to what other entities are doing. We have to look at that total burden. And so that, that's partly why I, um, why I voted for no tax increase. I also, when it comes to PR, I'm not necessarily talking rooftop. I'm not necessarily talking some of those things. But as I looked through the itemized list of some of those public relations things, I think we can do without some of the parties. I think we can do without some of the gifts. I think that some of those things are nice to give and nice to do for, but I think we can do without some of those if it means that we can hire more 911 operators. That's where I'm looking for efficiencies, not necessarily things that bring people into the downtown and actually bring in a vibrancy and bring in, um, tax revenues and those kinds of things. But I'm thinking that you look at the budget in lots of different ways and, and some of the public relations things, we, we probably could cut and not feel it as much. And especially if we're going to, the good that it would provide through 911 operator. Mr. Stewart?
Somehow I don't think we're underfunding police. We're spending 17 million, $25, excuse me, 17 million, 153,330 dollars in police services. That's an increase of 1,978,393 dollars over the last five years. So I, I don't know where you get that we're underfunding police. Fire department, we're spending 9,704,809 dollars. And it was 1,129,962 over the last five years. So it's not that we haven't been increasing the funding for these departments. And I think they do a great job with what they have. But I think we're funding them adequately. And I don't notice that our police service is inadequate. I think it's great service. I think our fire department gives great service. And I think we're doing the best we can to fund them, but we've increased our funding substantially. That's a huge increase over almost $2 million for police in five years.
And most of that is catch up?
Catch up? What are we catching up?
We're catching up from where we were. We have same number of police that we had, what was it, 15 years ago? And the community has grown how much? And so in my mind, that is catch up. The technologies have become, everything's more expensive. The cars that we have to buy for the police department are so much more expensive than they were 15 years ago. So that's what I'm figuring catch up.
I think $2 million is, I think, I, I talked to the police department. They feel, I think, they, all departments, when I was a member, liked more money. There's not a department that didn't request more than we gave them. But they did fine. And I think that we've done a great job. I think the administration's done a great job of using the resources that they have to give us great services.
And I agree with that. I agree with that point. But I just think that, uh, sometimes we, 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 we underfund. I think we are careful. I think that's a, a compliment to the city. I think, I struggle with just saying, just because we spend $17 million that we are adequately funding, because we need to look what that $17 million is actually giving us. And I think at times when we hear from the police department, they are, they are, they're worried about the covering the shifts. They need more police officers, officers to cover the shifts so that they're not having to put in the overtime and becoming less efficient. So those are the challenges that we face.
Join the challenges of the average citizen. That's a challenge that the average citizen is having.
And, and that's exactly right. And my heart goes out to the average citizen, but do we, we also have to face those things. We are elected to face those things as, as city representatives also to fight that same battle that the average citizen. We got to fight it in our own homes. And then we take on the opportunity and ob, and obligation to fight it for the city.
And if I could ask, uh, Ms. Santiago, uh, you mentioned earlier that we have to look at the total tax burden on, on the citizens. Mr. Sewell has, has proposed, um, an option that would, that would not increase the tax burden on, the overall tax burden on our residents by offsetting the property tax adjustment, inflation adjustment by decreasing the proposed rates, uh, rate increases on our utilities. And, and so that would not, you know, that would be a revenue neutral, um, option. And so, um, if our concern is the overall tax burden, is that something that, that we're interested in, in exploring more?
When we, when he raised that question, it didn't seem like it was fleshed out well enough. Dustin, I don't know if you, when you said how that would be spread out among the utilities, it didn't sound like finance was as confident that that was a, a great, um, avenue, but.
I, I have to object to that because I, I did discuss this with, with John this morning. And I, there's, there's just some details that need to be worked out, but it's basically just math. just math. So there's no, no problem at all with doing it. Yeah.
Can you come to the mic and talk so that the public can hear you too? Thank you.
My concern was just the consolidated fee schedule issue on, on what the council would have to adopt tonight as it reflected any transfers or reduction in rates. And just some of those details that would need to be worked out prior to the council adopting that schedule. And I think Brian could probably address some of the specifics related to that.
Well, and I, I think the proposal, as I understand it, would be, logistically, the way I think that you would do that is you'd go ahead and approve the full utility rate increases tonight in the tentative budget. And over the next six weeks, residents would pay those rates. And then six weeks from now, those rates would go down slightly at the same time that the tax rate went up. So at least that's what I understood Mr. Sewell's proposal to be. So it would be revenue neutral and it would be neutral to the, to the residents as far as what they were paying. It might cause, I can't speak to what customer service would think about the difficulty of changing the rates twice within a six-week period.
They would probably just phase them in to be revenue neutral over the remainder period.
So it wouldn't change what the residents would be paying?
That's what I understood the proposal to be.
Ideally, that's how it would work.
Yeah, I mean, I think the point that Dustin's making is, I mean, it might change what they're going to pay over a few cents because it's probably impossible to do the math so that the percentages equal to the penny the same amount. But it would be essentially revenue neutral and payment neutral.
So we would go, we would go through truth and taxation and we'd go through the whole process and we would pay whatever it costs $5,000 to do the truth and taxation for no benefit to the resident when it comes to actual, actually what they would be paying? Is that, what's that? Oh, okay.
Technically, if council wanted to go that direction, they could make that motion now in anticipation of a change later, six weeks from now.
Yeah. We've already voted on it and so...
Vote on Mr. Sewell's proposal in work meeting? Well, you voted on a resolution that this be the primary ordinance for consideration, but there's no, as I mentioned in that meeting, there's no reason that someone can't make a motion right now to overturn the decision in work meeting. So...
Is this amount in part one, is that the correct amount now? $2,143,500?
Yes, for the total without the tax increase.
Without the tax increase? Okay. Mr. Winterton?
I guess with regard to Mr. Sewell's proposal, I guess the only thing that I would be wondering about is the impact that it would have on our public works department because they would be taking some money out. And I have not heard necessarily the impact that that would be on our capital improvements that we have actually been budgeting that this is supposed to go to.
Mr. Harding?
If I understood the proposal, the proposal is to take the money that is gained from that property tax and put it into public works to completely offset. So public works would not, would not see the decrease. It would just, it would be, the money would be offset by the increased money from the property taxes.
And then we would have to take that 77,000 that is in the budget now and decrease it from someplace else.
That is correct.
And that's where I'm wondering, where would that 77, it's, it's...
It's the same, it's the same that is, that is taken out in order to have the ordinance that's before us. That 77,000 was cut here. We're saying, well, we'll keep those cuts, but we will actually have that property tax increase to do the inflation adjustment and make public works whole by moving the money there and not increase the overall burden on the residents because they're not putting the 77,000 into public works.
Mr. Stewart?
I'd like to make a motion that...
Wait, wait, he's going to answer some question that I might have had.
Mr. Stewart first and then we'll have Jimmy. Speak into the...
Turn on your mic.
Can you turn on his monitor so he can see what's, he can read it from here instead of the, the board behind? Mine's on, but his is not.
I make the motion that we adopt an ordinance, adopting a budget for Provo City Corporation for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016 and ending June 30th, 2017 in the amount of $201,143,500 and amending the consolidated fee schedule and Provo City Code Section
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there a second? Mr. Connect? Discussion on the motion? Mr. Sewell?
Just a question. So is everyone satisfied that we could do this in a revenue neutral way if we wanted to?
I am now.
Okay. Because that, that was the whole point. And I just have one other comment and then I won't dwell on this anymore. My whole motivation last night, as I laid, laid awake looking for a better option, because I had two options in front of me that I didn't like. And they both involved either a 4-3 or a 3-4 vote. I was looking for a compromise that could have garnered six or seven votes. And the, I was trying to understand the concerns of the people who didn't want the property tax. I thought I addressed them in the best way that I could think of. And also in a way that was structurally sounder over the long term. So anyway, that was my reason for making the effort.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Stewart?
The reason I made my motion is we go on discussing this, but let's just find out where the council stands.
Mr. Harding?
If that's the case, I'd like to make a substitute motion. And it's not necessarily before us, but...
I think if anticipating what I think your motion might be, we can put the other ordinance up if, if, if your proposal is to adopt the other ordinance.
It would, it would be similar, but I actually think that it would include the money, the amount that's listed here.
The amount is the same even with the property tax increase.
Okay.
So, so this is the, this is the same version that was in the public documents of the ordinance, except that the amount has been changed to match the amount from the, from the other ordinance, which is the, the proper amount. The difference between this and the one that was on the screen a few minutes ago was that this ordinance only adopts a tentative budget, pending truth and taxation hearings, schedules those hearings, and authorizes an increase in the certified tax rate if that's approved after those hearings.
Thank you for reading my intent so well. And so my substitute motion would be to adopt the, the motion, to adopt the ordinance that's on the screen now, which is an ordinance adopting a tentative budget for Provo City Corporation for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016 and ending June 30th, 2017 in the amount of $201,143,500, setting a public hearing to consider a proposed change in the certified tax rate and amending the consolidated fee schedule and Provo City Code Section 4.04.60.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Winterton. Any discussion on the motion, on the substitute motion? Those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Was there discussion?
I guess the discussion that I would like to have is that I look, we're not charging the residents anymore. And now I understand, this proposal came to me fairly quickly. And now, as I understand it better, I don't see an increase to our residents that we all wanted to have. I can support this one and feel like it's giving us the opportunity to have that annual truth and taxation and accountability. So I can, I see where this came, comes from now. I appreciate that, Dave.
Mr. Stewart? Oh, sorry.
No increase this year, but would increase future years.
If I could just clarify that, between now and August 22nd, this ordinance does absolutely nothing different than the other ordinance. What this ordinance, so just to be clear about that, this ordinance, what it does is it allows you to have a hearing in August and to pass a final budget at that time. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about what that final budget might be. So to Mr. Winterton's point, that final budget might reflect an increase in cost to the, to the residents if it approves the certified tax rate increase but doesn't approve a decrease in the utility rates. Or it might be revenue neutral if that final budget follows Mr. Sewell's proposal. But just so that we're completely clear, the only difference between the two ordinances between now and mid-August is that this, the substitute motion allows those hearings to happen. And to answer the question that Mr. Connect just asked me, the procedure, and I think Madam Chair mentioned this, is that the, the vote is on the substitute motion first.
So, so in discussion, basically this ordinance, I think, is achieving many of the goals that we have set out for this. This gives us more time to flesh out any details that we need. But the intent, I believe, is that we would, we would pass a budget that does not increase the tax burden on, on the residents, but is still more fiscally responsible and, and allows us to, to continue with our, our budget intent that we stated five days ago.
Call the question.
So... Sorry. You got me thinking now.
It's okay. Do we need a break?
Yeah. I actually would like to recess for a minute.
Five minutes or something?
Yeah, let's do a five-minute recess.
The opportunity for, like you said, for fiscal responsibility. We don't have, we can decrease it all.
We'd have to repeal what you did this year. You'd have to repeal what you used here for not to affect future years. But that was just for this year.
Sorry, sorry. I'm saying, I'm saying, if we do this this year, we don't do it next year. The rate increase that we adopted this year, we don't do it next year. We don't make any changes. We don't continue this next year. Like, we're offsetting it this year, but not necessarily offsetting it two years. So it's, it's an increase.
The whole purpose is to have an increase. The whole purpose of this.
Pardon me? Let's get started again, if you don't mind coming back to the dais, council members, if we can have you up here. Mr. Connect? Thank you. So we have a motion and it's a substitute motion and a second. Do we, do you want to read that back to us, Ms. Wees?
The substitute motion is the one that's shown up there. So that is the substitute.
Okay. Okay. So with the motion by Mr. Harding and with the second by Mr. Winterton. So those in favor? And those opposed? Those in favor are Mr. Winterton, Mr. Harding, and Mr. Sewell. Those opposed are Mr. Connect, Mr. Van Buren, Ms. Santiago, and Mr. Stewart. So then we'll vote on the original motion, which was to adopt the ordinance excluding the tax, the property tax increase.
And that is the one that's now currently on the screen.
And that's the one that's currently on the screen now. And that was a motion by Mr. Stewart and a second by Mr. Connect. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Harding?
One additional thing that the truth in taxation period would allow us to do is to have further discussion and reach out to the public on potential programs that we might cut. And I'm exhausted from our discussions so far today, but hesitant to even bring it up, but I can't, I can't ask our residents to pay these additional utility rates, and I feel like I can't not increase our property taxes to keep up inflation without cutting programs that I don't believe are in the proper role of city government to fund. So we have, past several years, we have appropriated $11,000 for, to the Miss Provo Scholarship Pageant in exchange for services of producing a float and representing the city at various functions. Recently, we asked the administration to put in an additional $10,000, as was discussed earlier, as well as move to administer that program through the council office. And while I think, those past years, I think we can, we can point to some specific services that were being provided to the city in producing that float and using that float, participating in various parades, and so I understand the services that were being provided by that. I disagree with increasing $10,000 more for the program. I think the program, through hard work of many volunteers, has been very successful in the previous years, and I'm not certain why we feel like we need to increase the amount that the city appropriates for that program. I think we've had a very persuasive presentations today about the good that is done through the program, about the high caliber of contestants and of winners and of, that are in the program. And I don't think anyone disputes the number of, the good that comes from their volunteer efforts. I do believe, though, in our community, we have hundreds, thousands of people that volunteer hundreds and thousands of hours, but are not compensated by the city for that. And so I think the question becomes, particularly when we are in such difficult financial times or situation here, I can't justify increasing another $10,000 for that program. I wish them the best. I hope, I hope they can continue to do as well as they have the past few years. I don't think that we should increase it $10,000, and I definitely do not believe that the program should be administered through the council office. I think we have a legislative branch and we have an administrative branch, and I think the administrative branch needs to continue to administer, administer programs. And I, so I guess with that discussion, I'd like to propose another substitute motion to decrease the council budget by 21,000, move 11,000 back into the administrative budget, and not increase the funding for the Miss Provo Scholarship Pageant in next year's budget.
My understanding was that the administration was unwilling to manage that when, when we, as a council, agreed to fund the 10,000, that the administration in that meeting said then the council needs to administer it.
And so it was my understanding as well, but if we, I thought it was, if we were, if we wanted to increase it, then they weren't willing to do that, but they were fine with the status quo. And so if we revert back to the status quo, and we can ask, but by moving back to the status quo where it was before, I, my understanding is they were okay with that situation, so they would be willing to take back that administration if we revert back to the 11,000 a year.
And my understanding as well is that if we did that, the Ms. Bramble and Ms., and Robyn, I'm blanking on your poem, their ability to raise those funds was getting more and more difficult because it was supposed to be short-term. When, when the funds were decreased from the city, it was, this was a short-term fix, and they were having a more and more difficult time raising those funds, so.
Madam Chair, we're having a discussion about a substitute motion, and we haven't got a second on that motion. If we don't have a second, then I don't know what this discussion...
I agree.
...purpose for.
I agree.
So can we at least move that far?
Yeah. I agree. Is there a second on the motion? Okay.
This is really hard for me, because I do believe that this is an administrative thing. It's not a legislative thing, and I think that we're overstepping our bounds as a council to take this on. I, at this point, I do have a question about the 11,000. I guess we're stuck on that with, with the float, because that's a contract, and we're required to do that at this point. I have talked with...
So is that a second on the motion?
No, it's not at this point, because, but I, because I've talked with Robyn and with, well, I'll...
Let's find out if there's a second on the motion first, if that's okay. Is there a second on the motion? Okay, the motion dies. And did you want to finish your comment, Mr. Winterton?
Yeah, this is, I, I am going to be supportive of this motion next year if I am not more convinced that this is the right thing to do for the city. I've talked with them, this, this spending that we've got is basically for the next year that they've already committed to, and so I'm holding off on that, but I am really, I am in support of what Dave is saying at this point. I don't think that this is something that the council should be doing.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table still to adopt the ordinance that we see here on the board, which is to adopt the budget without the property tax increase in brief. And so we'll vote on that. Is all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, is there discussion?
Yeah, just kind of a question. I mean, I guess since the question has been settled, I would go ahead and vote for this budget, but I do think there's not much purpose in having our intent statement, so I, I think, I guess this would be a substitute motion, but I would move that we adopt this motion and also repeal the intent statement that was passed last Thursday at the same time, because I don't think it's serving any purpose.
Is there a second on that motion? Seeing none, the motion dies?
Yeah.
So we'll go back to the original motion?
Okay.
Is there any more discussion on the motion that we see before us on the board? It was moved by Mr. Stewart, seconded by Mr. Connect. Those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Those in favor, Mr. Connect, Mr. Van Buren, Mr. Sewell, Ms. Santiago, Mr. Stewart. Those opposed, Mr. Harding and Mr., I know who you are, Mr. Winterton. It's been a long night. Thank you, sorry. Okay, on to the next item. A resolution authorizing Provo City to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Redevelopment Agency of Provo, authorizing the use of tax increment to facilitate the development of City View Apartments. And this will be presented by Mr. Walter, our Redevelopment Agency Director.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. The item for you tonight is a resolution asking for the authorization for the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement to use a portion of the city's tax increment that would be generated from development of the City View Apartments at 200 West and University Avenue. The council may remember, we spoke about this a while ago, where the developer has asked for consideration for the tax increment to be used to pay for a portion, or to pay for their impact fees. Had conversations with the school district and with the county commission, and as part of the process, in order to accrue the tax increment, the city council has to authorize the interlocal agreement with the Redevelopment Agency for that process. And so later on tonight, there'll be other, another resolution that has items that would be similar interlocal agreements with the county and with the school district and with the water conservation ministry. Tonight, we're asking you for the mayor, authorization for the mayor or his designate to sign the agreement that we can then present to the Redevelopment Agency for separate consideration. concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Are there questions? Mr. Connect?
Just wondering, a lot of the projects, maybe most downtown, need some kind of consideration or help, one way or the other. Are there any that are going forward now or being proposed that do not require some kind of subsidy or help?
In the downtown or in Provo in general?
Downtown.
In the downtown, there have been some individual rehabilitation projects that have happened in individual storefronts that have not approached either the city or the agency that I'm aware of for some subsidies. But for example, 63 East was a subsidy. We are, you know, in terms of other projects, we have participated primarily in creating parking structures that have gone to provide parking in some of those spaces, and that's going to be part of the hotel project as it moves forward, if it does, if it works forward with this court land swap that we did recently. So there are, you know, the major projects are still asking for some sort of participation by the city and/or the agency.
So I've had people ask me, at what point is the downtown healthy enough that we just get market rate projects that don't need, well, or just projects that don't need help?
Well, I think, you know, it's kind of, you know, there have been two fairly large projects recently in the downtown that, if you consider the court on its own to be an individual project, as well as the restoration of the old tabernacle into the temple. So both of those projects are roughly $100 million each, but they will not result in a significant increase on the property tax rolls, because both of those entities are tax exempt. Instead, we're kind of hoping for, when those projects happen, and, you know, the agency is participating in the courthouse project, we were the intermediary with courts and with PEG at the state's request to make this happen. I think we're getting closer. We are, we are reaching a point where our investment will not be as substantial. You know, we did have a redevelopment project area that covered the downtown that expired in 2015. This, there have been other, you know, developments that have happened around, for example, you know, the transfer of the mall property to the new property owner, not necessarily in our downtown, but it's certainly an influencer for the downtown. So they are in the process of getting capital to make some improvements to that. So that would be, our participation has simply been the tax increment deal that was previously created. So I think we're reaching, we're reaching a better stabilization point, we're just incrementally approaching it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions for Mr. Walter? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Or a motion, Mr. Stewart?
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing Provo City to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Redevelopment Agency of Provo, authorizing the use of tax increment to facilitate the development of City View Apartments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Those in favor? Thank you. The voting is unanimous in the affirmative.
David, sorry you had to stay so long.
He's still here. We have a couple more.
I'm not going anywhere.
I call for a motion to recess as the municipal council and reconvene as the Redevelopment Agency of Provo.
I'll second that.
Was there a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, do you want to motion, or?
I will, I will move to recess as the municipal council and reconvene as the RDA.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Connect, thank you. Those in favor? Thank you. The voting is unanimous in the affirmative.
Public hearing on the, let's get my glasses back. A public hearing on a resolution adopting a budget for the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City Corporation for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017, in the amount of $4,292,168. Dustin?
This budget, councilors, is actually identical to the tentative budget. There were no changes to the Redevelopment Agency. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer specifics about it, or David Walters, I'm sure, would be equally capable.
Are there questions?
See no questions, we'll look for a public hearing. Thanks, Dustin. Is there, is the public hearing to comment on this idea, this resolution? No comment, I'll bring you back to the council for discussion. Council discussion? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Santiago, all in favor? Voting's unanimous. Resolution authorizing Redevelopment Agency of Provo, excuse me, a resolution authorizing the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City to execute an interlocal agreement with Provo City, Provo School District, Utah County, and the Utah Water Conservation District, authorizing the collection of tax increment related to facilities, the development of City View Apartments. David?
Mr. Chair and agency members, good evening. This item is a companion item to the one that the council just previously approved. This authorizes the Redevelopment Agency to enter into separate interlocal agreements with the four main taxing entities, Provo City, Provo School District, Utah County, and the Water Conservation District, for collection of the tax increment that would be generated by the development of the City View Apartments at 200 South and University Avenue. Utah State redevelopment law requires the agency board to pass a resolution with the interlocal agreements that they can then be submitted to the individual taxing entities for their approval by resolution as well.
Any question for Mr. Walter? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the council for discussion. Seeing no discussion?
I do, I do have some discussion. Apology, I don't have the documents up, but I assume these are the same detail as we've gone over in RDA meeting and in our previous council work session. So what percentage of our, of the tax increment are we looking to divert? Was it, it was 95% if I remember correctly?
It's 95% of what would accrue to the city.
Right, of the increment?
Yes, of the increment, not...
Of the increment.
So the base year will remain the same. The base year will be 2015, 2014, 2015. So the base year... So, the base year, so the taxing entities will still split the tax on the assessed value, I believe it's $2.9 million. So, that stays the same throughout the collection period. It's the increase in that taxable value that then gets split off. So, different agencies participate at different rates. For example, the Utah County will participate at 75%, and I believe Utah, the Provo School District is 71%. And that's per their individually adopted policies.
Okay, thank you. Earlier, we talked about, Mr. Connect brought up the question of, at what point do we no longer need to subsidize good development in our downtown? And you talked about some incremental progress towards that. And I do think that we have a more vibrant, a more viable, a more, a healthier downtown that is more attractive for people to invest in. And as such, I'd propose to the council that we look to reduce the amount of tax increment that we're giving from the 95% as drawn up down to 90%.
Sorry, I'm going to interject. Now, this might be the proper place to use a motion to reconsider, if we need to, because the proper place for that motion was actually in the previous item, number five. Because number five was where the city authorized the tax increment to be used for this. This item is the Redevelopment Agency, the board authorizing the agency to go out and sign contracts with all of the taxing entities, allowing the agency to collect the tax increment in order to give it to City View Apartments. So, in order to do what you actually are wanting to do would require reconvening the council and making a motion to reconsider item number five.
Okay, I apologize, and I appreciate the clarification. I thought the details of that contract, this item as the RDA was the proper time to consider that, and so I apologize for not speaking up earlier.
With the seven oh vote, is it a deposit? Can we reconsider?
Yes, because the only thing you need to reconsider is, the person making the motion has to have been on the winning side. So, actually, anybody could make the motion.
Okay, on the winning side. It didn't matter how close it was.
Right.
Okay.
So, then I withdraw my comment.
Any other council discussion? Looking for a motion?
I will move to approve the resolution as written.
Is there a second? David, second? No, that's not right. More than one David. Okay, Mr. Sewell. All in favor? Voting's been unanimous. I call for a motion to adjourn the Redevelopment Agency of Provo meeting and reconvene as the Stormwater Service District of Provo meeting. Is there a second? I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Mr. Sewell, second. All in favor? Voting's been unanimous. We'll turn it back over to Ms. Santiago.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing on a resolution adopting a budget for the Provo City Stormwater Special Service District in the amount, in the amount of $6,191,500 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017. And this will be presented by Dustin Grabah, our Budget Officer and Controller.
Thank you. Counselors, the number of that item shifted, there's two reasons. First, I think we erroneously only included the operations budget in the original amount. So, it's not a dramatic increase actually in the expense for this item. Now, it also includes the capital improvement projects, which should have been included, similar to how we adopted the budget for the Provo City entity. The other adjustments were on the city's side, the distribution of the safety officer, so the Stormwater Special Service District changed from the tentative budget to pick up about $22,000 or a quarter of that, that safety officer, as well as they added a half of the blue staking position that was added to wastewater and stormwater. So, that, that, so there's about $70,000 in additional expenses compared to the tentative budget for the Stormwater Special Service District. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Jimmy McNatt is also available.
Other questions for Mr. Grabah? Okay, thank you. This is scheduled for a public hearing, so if there are any of the public that would like to comment on this item, please come to the podium and give us your name and city of residence. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion for this item and bring it back to the council for discussion. Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as written.
Thank you, Mr. Winterton. Is there a second? Mr. Stewart, thank you. Those in favor? The voting is unanimous in the affirmative. Thank you. Now, we'll adjourn or look for a motion to adjourn the Stormwater Special Service District and reconvene as the municipal council of Provo.
Well, I was just, you don't actually need to do that because all of the agenda items have been satisfied.
Oh.
Well, but I have a caveat to that, as always.
Okay, I didn't notice there are no other items.
So, it's possible now to simply have a motion to adjourn and close the meeting, but if, as I anticipate, Mr. Harding wants to readdress the question that he raised, then adjourning as the Stormwater Special Service District and reconvening as the council would be appropriate in order to allow consideration of that item.
I'd like to move, as the chair originally requested or called for, which is to adjourn as the Stormwater Special Service District and reconvene as the municipal council.
As the municipal council or the RDA? It's the municipal council. Okay, so that, the motion by Mr. Harding and a second. Mr. Sewell, thank you. Those in favor? The voting is unanimous in the affirmative. So, we'll go back to item.
So, the next procedural step would be for Mr. Harding to make a motion to reconsider. If that motion is seconded and passes, then item number five is undone and is back on the table for consideration. If the motion is not seconded or does not pass, then the item is approved as it was previously, and there's no discussion of it.
Okay.
So, let's see if I can get this right. So, I move to reconsider item number five to have further discussion on item number five. So, I move to reconsider the resolution that we passed authorizing Provo City to enter into an interlocal agreement with the RDA of Provo, authorizing the use of tax increment to facilitate the development of City View Apartments.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Sewell, thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
I'd like to ask for clarification. I was a little fuzzy on what number we were changing and what effect that would have, so I'd appreciate some clarification.
So, and now's as good a time as, actually, I guess we can discuss it now before we even decide whether we want to reconsider it or not. But, basically, my understanding is that we were diverting 95% of the tax increment that was due to Provo City for the property value increase due to this project to the RDA, which would then be used to pay for the impact fees and some other expenses there. We've talked about possibly, you know, getting to the point where our downtown does not need these type of tax increment financing and other incentives. And we've heard that, you know, we're already on our way, and it's, you know, incremental was how it was described. And in light of that, I propose that instead of diverting 95% of our tax increment, but we instead divert 90%. It's pretty much a token amount. If I remember the calculations, it's about $13,000 on a $20 million project. But, the purpose of decreasing it from 95% to 90% is just to signal to the development community that, that we feel that our downtown is getting to the point that it no longer needs these kind of, or, yeah, it's getting to the point where these incentives we feel won't be needed. And it's just a way to signal to them early on that our intent to decrease this in the future.
Mr. Winterton?
Question about that, Dave, we already approved nine, the school boards already approved 95%, the water districts, all those, can we do anything different than they do? We're allowed to do that.
Yes, I mean, each individual agency can do that. So, for example, the Utah County has a resolution that they've adopted that they will go no more than 75%. And the school district traditionally goes 71%.
So, is that what they're at now? Is it 71% or where are they at?
One second.
Okay.
One minute, I should say, to be a little.
Yeah, 71.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Connect, did you have a comment?
So, Dave, we're talking a reduction here of $13,000, and what effect do you think this will have on the deal?
So, the developer is obligated to pay, in this particular instance, the tax increment was going to pay for the impact fees that are required by the project. So, the developer has a mandate to pay those fees. If there is a shortfall, they will pay for that. So, it just, there is a little, there would be just a little bit less in the tax increment flow than originally estimated. They would still have the obligation to pay the impact fees. And the long-term impact is probably going to be, there will not be as much, the developer had requested that if there were excess tax increment after the impact fees, that they would be allowed to, you know, reimburse themselves for some of their other costs. So, if there is a slightly smaller tax increment flow, then there would not be as much money for them to reimburse themselves. We still get made whole in terms of the impact fees.
But it seemed like there was a little leeway.
There was, there was some. There would have been some.
Mr. Sewell?
Could you kind of give us the administration's view of taking a step like this? I mean, you do a lot of deals, and you have a lot of, you know, history of working with developers, and I just don't have a good feel for how this would be perceived or what kind of the ramifications might be.
So, I, I think it's certainly within the council's purview to say, as other agencies have done, that, hey, look, you know, we're, we're a property taxing entity, and we rely on that. And for us to give up some of that, we'd have to have some extra, you know, have some sort of benefit to the community. I think that, you know, traditionally, from what I can tell, that when tax increment deals have been done in Provo, that we have traditionally gone for about 95% of the tax increment, of the 100% of the tax increment. The other taxing entities have opted to participate in order to show that they are interested in development that occurs within Provo, but they've, they've also opted to cap because they are relying on that property tax to help fund some of their operations and expenses. So, for us to, you know, we can certainly consider that. I think, you know, I don't believe that the number in this case is significant that would cause the deal to stop. I do believe that, you know, we would, we would get our impact fees first, and then we would, you know, the developer just does not have as much money as we had initially anticipated in order to reimburse themselves for some of their other expenses. So, I think it's something that, you know, the council certainly is more than allowed to consider. I mean, we don't have to, we don't have to give it away, the entire 100% of the tax increment. It's something that we can say, hey, we need a certain portion that we need to retain for our expenses and our operations.
Mr. Stewart?
We've discussed this before, and I think they're anticipating the 95.
They are anticipating the 95, and that's.
Because we discussed it in a work meeting.
I'm sorry, yes, we discussed this before and presented it, I mean, they did, we did, we ran the numbers at the 95% level.
This is the type of housing that we're, that I think we were trying to encourage. We're looking for market rate housing down in the, in the downtown, and we have, you know, I feel like we're already down, this far down the process, and this is the type of housing we want to encourage. I, I think this would be a little discouraging to developers who may, you know, be looking to develop market rate housing, and I don't think I want, personally, want to discourage that right now.
What I could probably suggest, that if you didn't change it on this deal, but that at a later date, that you could consider adopting a policy that would limit the amount of tax increment participation in future deals.
Okay, I'd like to weigh in on that, too. I think the awkwardness of this is the time of the suggestion. And I think this developer is not going to, for $13,000, spoil their relationship with us, but they would kind of feel the same way about us, like, why are you poking us for this? And this at the beginning of a deal, and knowing what our limitations are at the beginning of a deal, as we work with the developers, is a very different thing than at the end of a deal saying, nah, it's, let's, let's get a little closer to that edge of where you'll push back. And so, I think Mr. Walters has accurately expressed, yeah, we can do this, and yeah, I don't think he's going to bolt for $13,000, but I think it puts us in a pretty awkward situation.
Mr. Harding?
So, this is, you know, I agree, we're at the, kind of the finish line now, but this is something that I spoke with the developer before we had our RDA meeting and expressed my interest in considering this with the rest of the council. We spoke about it at the RDA meeting, we spoke about it at the work session. And so, I don't believe that this would be something out of the blue to the developer. I'm not certain that I would, I don't know if I would agree with setting a policy that going forward, we would not do 95%, because I think that we should look at it at a case-by-case basis. Is apartments, you know, would we treat apartments potentially differently than we would in an office building? You know, and so, I don't want to limit necessarily our, limit our options in the future, but I think on this, you know, for apartments, is it, is it, you know, does it make sense to fund it at the full 95, or does 90 kind of give that indication to the developers that, you know, we are not as aggressive in trying to bring in these developments? We do feel that downtown Provo, on its own right, is a great place to develop, and so, again, this is, this is more of a signal. The question I had for Mr. Walters is, you know, we've talked about the impact on this particular project. I'm more curious what the long-term impact might be on future proposals and future development.
I, I don't think it would have a chilling effect on development that would move forward in Provo. I think, real briefly, I think the law does look at residential development differently because the taxable value gets reduced to 55% as opposed to like commercial or industrial projects. So, there is already a little bit of a difference in the values as it hits the assessed rules. I think that as we move forward, it. I think that as we move forward, it gives us, as staff, it gives us a little bit, you know, if we can project that we're going to do the 95%, or if it's the 90%, that gives us a little bit more certainty in what we're looking, on the numbers that we're looking at, as if we came back and, and kind of negotiated it on a case-by-case basis, I don't know if I'm making sense now, so, but, I mean, if we knew going in, hey, we're going to, you know, the most, here's our, here's our cap, this is our ceiling, and if we go in and those are the numbers, and we run that, and we can say yes, then we're able to participate and build this parking structure, or do half the parking structure. So one of the things we are looking at is the parking structure for the downtown, for the court, and the hotel, and whatever other development that happens in that three-block area. And knowing that we're doing, if we, if we knew that we're doing 95%, at least we could be a little more certain about the numbers as we move forward, what we could expect to sell in terms of a tax increment bond. I don't know if that helps answer your question or not.
Mr. Connect?
So I raised the issue, you called the question. We are also considering, we have a committee to talk about our development process and how reliable and consistent our development process is. When, so that's influencing how I feel about changing the deal at this late point, that we can send a message, we can talk about the next project and give you instructions so that when someone comes in, you say, you know, it's changed. It's 80, 90, 95, well, we don't want to, you know, but it's less. But I don't feel comfortable changing it at this point, midstream as it were, and sending a message that will be perceived in the development of community that we.
Wrong message.
It's the wrong message, yeah.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with, with that, you know, I, I do think that we need to start sending the message that we feel that our downtown doesn't need as much incentives. I mean, honestly, developer's going to come in, and if it's in this kind of area, they're going to say, well, here's my, here's my project, and then they're going to ask for the full amount. You know, they would not be smart businessmen if they, business people, if they, if they did not ask for the full amount, and so I, I think we do need to send that, send that message, you know, if we wait till the next one, that's fine, I just wonder if the message would be, again, we're talking $13,000, but I think, I think the message would be clearer, more people would receive that message if, if we did it now, but if we, if we want to hold off until, till next time, I'm, I'm fine with that as well.
Next time is actually just having a policy discussion and instructing staff so that when someone comes in, they are told what the expectations are.
Depending on what the proposal is, I might be very comfortable giving the tax increment financing at 95%.
You mean if it was a business instead of apartments?
It would depend on the proposal, and so that's, that's one thing I'm a little wary of, is, is, you know, I don't, I don't think, I wouldn't, at this point at least, I would not be comfortable making a blanket policy that, you know, capping it at, at a certain amount, I think it's, would need to be done on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I still think we ought to have that discussion and give some instruction to staff so that it's not just open-ended.
So we have a motion by Mr. Harding, and we have a second by Mr. Sewell. Those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, the motion fails. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell, is there a second? Mr. Connect, thank you, those, those in favor? Voting is unanimous in the affirmative, thank you.
Pardon?